Welcome to the March 26, 2013 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Menuchyan.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eric Quintero.
Here.
The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Friedman.
Please rise and join me in renewing our pledge to the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice and moral.
Stand for the invocation which will be delivered this evening by Chaplain Al Garcelazzo from Glendale Adventist Medical Center.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Before I have the invocation, I just wanted to mention that this week at Glendale Adventist Medical Center, we're celebrating our Week of Spiritual Emphasis, and this is an annual event where we focus on our mission and values as a hospital, and of course, our mission is to share God's love by promoting healing and wellness for the whole person. And on behalf of Glendale Adventist Medical Center, I wanted to thank all of you for everything that you do in meeting the physical, emotional, and spiritual needs of the community. I know it's appreciated. Let's pray. Dear God, we are glad to be here tonight at the City Council meeting and grateful for the civil and religious liberties that we enjoy. I pray that you will bless our mayor, City Council members, as well as the city staff. We really do appreciate their efforts and everything that they do, especially in promoting and meeting the physical, emotional, and spiritual needs of our residents. I pray now that you will be in our midst here during this meeting. May our words and decisions reflect your love and your eternal principles. In your name we pray. Amen.
And we have your report.
Agenda for the March 26, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, March 21, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Next, under Presentation and Appointments, at 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of April 2, 2013.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for April 2, 2013, Election Day for us here in Glendale, we have no Glendale Housing Authority Business Agenda items. That evening for the City Council meeting, we have one item under consent, Director of Community Services and Parks. This is the Civic Auditorium Roof Replacement Project, and it's in connection with Spec. Number 3497. And we have one item under action, Director of Community Services and Parks. This is regarding Maple Park Improvement Project. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. What's next?
Next, at 3B is a proclamation designating April 2, 2013 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and April 24, 2013 as Denim Day in Glendale.
Is there someone who's going to? Yes. Right, I'll read the proclamation. "Or as the United States Government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and the Glendale Commission on the Status of Women in Collaboration with Peace Over Violence has declared April 24, 2013 as Denim Day in Los Angeles. Every two minutes, someone in America is sexually assaulted. Approximately 1 in 6 women are raped during their lifetime, and youth under 18 years of age account for approximately 44 percent of all reported rapes. With proper education, there is compelling evidence that we can successfully reduce the incidence of this physically and psychologically damaging crime. Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Days are intended to draw attention to the fact that rape and sexual assault are serious issues in our society. The members of the Glendale City Council strongly support the efforts of the City of Glendale, City of Glendale's Commission on the Status of Women in Collaboration with Peace Over Violence to educate people in our community about the true impact of rape and sexual assault, and what can be done to prevent it. Therefore, I, Frank Quintero, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim the month of April 2, 2013 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, designate April 24 as Denim Day in Glendale."
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I'm Denise Miller. I'm the Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women, and with me I have Teresa Alexanian. On behalf of myself and all the commissioners, we would like to thank you very much for this proclamation, and just to identify a couple of more words in addition to the facts that you identified about rape. Rape is an act of brutality, and it is a degradation of the soul. It is a violation of the most intimate core of the self. The trauma of sexual coercion and assault at different stages of women's life cycles leaves many women and girls with a severe loss of esteem, health, and autonomy. Under your direction, we look forward, as a commission, to providing advocacy to the City of Glendale. During the month of April, which is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, in an effort to promote prevention of sexual assault against women and girls, we will be offering free self-defense classes. You can find these classes by going to the website with the City of Glendale, or by looking at women@ci.glendale.ca.us. We will be offering these classes on Wednesday, April 3, Wednesday, April 10, and Wednesday, April 17, and they will all be at various locations. And we appreciate that the community are SVPs for this, as they're always filled up. We also want to let you know that the commission is also supporting the Peace Over Violence Denim Day in Los Angeles, as you identified, and we have a fundraising drive. Denim Day was started as a protest by women in the Italian Parliament to the Italian Supreme Court, where a judge overturned and dismissed a case of rape conviction of a 45-year-old driving instructor who raped an 18-year-old girl during her first driving lesson. The chief judge stated that because the victim wore very, very tight jeans, she had to help the gentleman remove them, and by removing those jeans, it was no longer rape but consensual sex. This year, Denim Day is April 24, and the commission is organizing dollars for denim in Glendale to raise funds for Peace Over Violence. Over the course of the past five years, the commission has donated over $7,000 to Peace Over Violence. Lastly, this commission would very much like to thank this council for taking our request for looking at the resolution of SB 59 very seriously. That is regarding the antiquated rape law, which now will identify instead of just rape of a spouse, but rape by a sexually intimate partner. I'm happy to let you know that it's in the Appropriations Committee, and that we know our commission could not have gotten this far without the direction and the assistance of you, and we're very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Your good work.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Kazakhian.
Next item on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
Ms. Friedman.
Thank you. I wanted to mention a few events I went to this week, and also to bring up a couple of issues. First, I attended the Seroptimists of Glendale's Accolade Luncheon, where the Seroptimists give grants to help organizations that help women and girls in our community and in the larger community. It was a wonderful event, very well-attended, and the Seroptimists really do so much in terms of fundraising and raising awareness about issues that affect women and girls. So I want to congratulate all of them for a great event. I also attended, although it was brief because I was running between two meetings, I attended along with Mr. Najarian the YWCA's Gratitude Reception in Honor of Women's History Month. We were there in time to see a video about the beginnings of the YWCA and what they've accomplished over the years, and it was really eye-opening. I didn't realize that they were such an old organization and that they had accomplished so many really amazing things. So I want to congratulate the Y for a very successful year. They've been growing and taking on more tasks and really doing a great job. Also, along with my colleagues, at least I saw Mr. Najarian there, the United Young Armenians had their annual telethon that raises money for their genocide awareness events. They do a march in Hollywood, and they do a candlelight vigil in Glendale. It was extremely well-attended. When I was there, Eric Garcetti was onstage, and there were politicians and famous people coming and going, so congratulations to them. And now in terms of two issues that I'd like to ask council if they would take up. One has to do with the Rim of the Valley Study, which is basically a new part of the National Forest System that runs along the rim of mountains in the area. I wanted to see if the council would be amenable to us sending a letter of support to the alternatives of the study that would bring this wonderful system into Glendale and into our mountains.
Yes.
Okay, so that's one thing, and I don't think it needs to come back to us. We can just issue a letter to whoever staff feels is appropriate, but I would think to C.C. Adam Schiff as well in whatever response we send to the National Forest Service. And secondly, I read that Burbank has just passed an ordinance that bans mobile billboards in their city, and I would like us to take this up. I've had complaints over the years, and I had thought that there was nothing we were able to do because of First Amendment concerns. And by the way, these billboards are not, we're not talking about a contractor sign on the side of their truck. These are vehicles, sometimes that don't even have engines, that are parked sometimes forever in our neighborhoods that have all sorts of signs on them. I mean, they're basically billboards, and they get around our billboard codes by being on wheels, but they have parking impacts, they take up parking spaces. The latest one's been advertising topless maids, which some of our residents have complained about and just find offensive. So it's something that I would ask any of my colleagues if you're interested in hearing what they did in Burbank and in hearing this issue.
I'd support that.
Okay, so we have a second for that, and you know, take whatever time you need to really come back with, because I know that there are First Amendment, potential First Amendment issues, I want to be sure that we know what we can legally do, what we can't do. That's all. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and let me remind people that next Tuesday is Election Day, so please vote. There's still time to educate yourself. Is there, Mr. Clerk, is there time to still request an absentee ballot, or is that time over?
Actually, today is the last day to request an absentee ballot, but if people wish to vote by absentee, and they know that they will not be in the city or at their polling place on Election Day, they can come into the city's election center, located in the small police community room, and request an emergency vote-by-mail ballot and cast their ballot. That way, they'll know their vote will count.
There you have it. There's no excuse to not vote. So please, it's your civic duty, and let's hope that everybody gets out and we have a good turnout this election. Thanks.
Mr. Weaver. Okay, yes, the YWCA is back. They are moving forward on all fronts, and I'm particularly interested in what they're doing with the Glendale Veterans Coalition. As we now know, there are many female veterans coming back from the, we call it, post-9/11, from the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq, and the YWCA is part of the coalition that we formed here in the city of Glendale. And then the Rim of the Valley is extremely important. It's been around for many years, but the idea is to build more and more, or to get more and more open space and open land. That includes the Verdugos and all the surrounding mountains, so it's really becoming, and will eventually become, the largest urban suburban park so close to a large population center. Any comments from the staff?
Yes, thank you, sir. If I may, just because something has been being talked about in some corners in the community, and I just feel it's probably important for people to have good, accurate information, especially information that's in context, but it's, I want to make sure that we're very brief because it's not on the agenda, we can talk about it later, but just to give you a quick primer as to this particular subject, as well as the folks watching at home. And what I'm referring to is a civil grand jury report that was published online by the Los Angeles Civil Grand Jury. Now, civil grand jury is different from a criminal grand jury, and they look at government options or operations, essentially looking for instances for improvement, or in other cases, even waste, fraud, and abuse. Folks can fill out a complaint form like this one, and the civil grand jury is primarily, as I say, focused on either evidence of misconduct in the operations of municipalities or in the record-keeping and bookkeeping of municipalities, but really not involved at all in local elections, municipal elections, and crossing over into that arena. And that's why it's particularly perplexing that the civil grand jury for the County of Los Angeles would issue an interim report, which is nearly unprecedented. I don't recall, I defer to the city attorney, the last time that an interim report was published by the civil grand jury, because typically, they will publish their reports in June and July and the summer months. But in this interim report that they have released, they explicitly call out the fact that they are looking to have some degree of impact, for some reason or another, on Glendale's elections, which, as you heard, are next Tuesday. I don't know which really is more surprising and really which is worse, the fact that the civil grand jury would engage in political activity like this outside of what their charter is, or that they could be so very wrong in their analysis of a given situation. The situation that they have taken under their purview, complaint that they received, has to do with the general fund transfer from GWP. Now, when you look at the six-page interim report that was published by the civil grand jury, they cite a number of cases, and they cite the constitutional amendments known as Prop. 218 and Prop. 26. The problem is that the most germane, the most salient case in California that deals with utility transfers from public utilities to their host city is that of the city of the case known as Redding, yet that is not referenced anywhere in their interim report. In fact, the cases that are cited are cases that primarily have to do with water transfers. And those transfers don't really apply to Glendale because Glendale doesn't transfer water revenues, and hasn't for over two years, and the civil grand jury knew this. The application of Prop. 218, which deals with property-related fees, charges, and assessments, has no bearing in this case because Prop. 218 specifically exempted electrical utilities, and the Prop. 26 application doesn't make any sense either because Prop. 26 is prospective, not retroactive. And so anything and everything that Glendale has done today, as we have said repeatedly and publicly and consistently, everything that we've done is within the confines of the state's constitution. So again, why the civil grand jury would do this, I don't know, other than to cause confusion in our upcoming elections, because at the end of the day, Measure B, which is what the target is from the civil grand jury report, as best as we can make out, doesn't deal with constitutionality, doesn't really deal with these weighty issues that the civil grand jury presumes to be tackling. It deals with cleanup language in the city charter, reconciling the city charter language with GAAP. Nothing more, nothing less. It's unfortunate. The civil grand jury, I think, I think what we'll find out in the coming months, in their rush to judgment and trying to find a narrative that befit the story that they wanted to tell versus what the facts would indicate, has done themselves a great disservice, more so than just a disservice to Glendale, but to themselves and to the institution of the civil grand jury. We have posted the civil grand jury's interim report on our website. We have posted our review of that on our website, and would invite anybody and everybody to compare those two documents.
Can I ask a question? Are these judges on the civil grand jury?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Friedman, no, they are citizens who apply prior to July 1 of every year to be members of the civil grand jury.
And does their decision have any sort of legal impact at all, or any weight? Does it use for precedent? Does it make set policy? Is it a court decision?
No, it is not. It's essentially the role that's been portrayed by the grand jury and by the courts, is as to weigh in on the issues that Mr. Ochoa spoke about, fiscal affairs and that sort of thing.
So this is not a legal decision in any way?
Not legally, it's not legally binding, and as Mr. Ochoa alluded to, it has significant factual and legal errors that are troubling to our office, not only because they're wrong, but they didn't, we tried to actually meet with them prior to publishing it, because they do, by statute required, to give it to us two days before publishing, and they wouldn't meet with us whatsoever to allow us to clarify the errors that they made in the report.
Mr. Najarian.
Thank you for your summary, Mr. Ochoa. I am quite disturbed at the intent of the civil grand jury. They make it clear in their writings that they want to publish their interim report before our election so as to influence the voters of Glendale. And my job here is nothing, if nothing, it is to stand up for Glendale. I view the conduct of the civil grand jury as juror misconduct. They went far beyond their scope. They have violated many of the rules that we live by and that we operate by in a democratic society, that is, a governmental entity intervening in the election process. I would like to agendize next week, or as soon as it's available, a response, to review the series of responses, whether it's an investigation by the state attorney general into their conduct, whether it needs to go to the presiding judge, although there lies the conflict. The entity that selects the grand jury is the L.A. Superior Courts, and they get to be the referees as well. So I think there's inherent conflict, asking the judge who appoints the jurors to decide that their conduct goes beyond the scope of their authority. So let's bring it back. I don't think we should stand for it. It sets a dangerous precedent for every other city and every other community in L.A. County. We need to put our foot down, find out exactly what was going on there. And I won't address their findings. I think that will later prove to be erroneous, but the fact is that they're deliberately timing this, despite our objections, to interject themselves in our campaign. And that's the campaign on the measures that we're talking about here. It's wrong, and we have to put our foot down, and let's lead the charge against an overzealous civil grand jury. Would someone agree to that?
Sure. Put it on.
If I may, just again, to reiterate the point that Mr. Ochoa made and that Councilmember Najarian is making, it's, we're not supposing that the grand jury did this for the purpose of injecting themselves into our electoral process. They admit that in the cover letter to the judge on this. So it's very clear, and I, you know, as much as I find fault with the actual substance of the report, I, my personal view is that they, it was really inappropriate and egregious for them to do this at this time.
And I think that anyone that supports the release of their report at this time does not support a free and fair democratic election in the city of Glendale.
Okay, any other staff comments? What's next?
Next on the calendar is Consent Items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
I don't have any cards. Will the consent calendar fly? Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Eric Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is under item, and would you like me to go to item 8A or 8C?
No, Oral Communication.
Oral Communications, this is a three-minute event announcement portion. This is a portion reserved for three-minute community events, and then following all conclusion of city business, we'll have the full five-minute portion. Thank you.
All right, I have a number of cards. Elise Calphayan, followed by Sheila Murray.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of council, staff, and the public. I'm Elise Calphayan, and I am president of the Friends of the Glendale Public Library, and I'm here tonight to invite our library patrons and the public to a community meeting about plans for the Central Library renovation. Gruen Associates, the firm that's now overseeing the Brand Library renovation and is also working on the downtown L.A. Union Station master plan, will be presenting its designs for the Central Library, and the Library Arts and Culture Department is seeking feedback from the public. The community meeting will be held Monday, April 8, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. in the Central Library Auditorium at 222 East Harvard Street in Glendale. I'm also here tonight to invite the community to our event celebrating National Library Week in April. Four events, four evenings in a row. So we have Wendy Lawless presenting her memoir, which has received top reviews in national media on April 15. April 16 is a panel of local authors who've self-published their books, and last year, when we presented a panel of self-published authors, it was a very popular event and very informative. April 17, four artists are going to talk about their work with the Shushi Art Project, an international festival of contemporary art in the Republic of Nagorno-Karaba. And April 18, journalist Amy Wilentz will discuss her book about post-earthquake Haiti. So all these free events are sponsored by the Friends of the Public Library, and more information about them is available on our website. The Friends also sponsor the library's summer reading program and literacy and other special programs, and we encourage the public to join the Friends, but especially to come to the community meeting to hear about plans to renovate the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sheila Murray, followed by Arlene Vador.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Sheila Murray, a longtime resident of Glendale and user of the library system. With me is Denise Myers, who's also a member of the volunteer group that I belong to and a resident of Glendale. As you know, our governments, federal, state, county, city, whatever, have stopped a lot of the payments to the arts, tours of the White House, funds for schools and libraries and so on, so a group of volunteers have decided to help our libraries. We're having a fundraiser selling cookbooks. The new theme for the summer reading program is going to be "Reading is So Delicious," and this prompted us to come up with the idea for a cookbook sale. The sale will be held at the Chevy Chase Branch on May 4 of this year, and we hope you'll be able to stop by and purchase some really great cookbooks at wonderful prices. For instance, we have a gorgeous cookbook, which was originally priced at $50. It still has a price tag, and it will probably be marked $2 or $3. Now, here's an example of one of our cookbooks, the Chez Panisse Cookbook. For those of you who don't know, Chez Panisse is in Berkeley and is run by Alice Waters, who's very famous and very rich. The new, the sale is in time for Mother's Day, so you can buy your mother a nice present for not too much money. And you can also buy yourself a nice cookbook for not too much money. The funds that we collect will be given to Friends of the Library, and they put it to very good use. So far, we've collected about 500 books without any advertising, and we'd like to see that amount increase to several thousand. In sorting the books we already have, I've seen many beautiful, expensive books that have been donated. I personally gave my almost entire collection of some 150 books for the cause. I also cleaned out a part of the garage. We have a bunch of great general cookbooks, but we also have a lot of ethnic cookbooks, health, diabetic, low carb, low cal, books on baking, microwaving, and crockpot cookery. We have specialty cookbooks, such as Martha Stewart's entertaining books on how to set a table, how to decorate for parties, outdoor entertaining, and so on. In short, we already have a treasure trove of very nice books, but we need more, a lot more. So please clean out your bookshelves, cabinets, and attics, and bring your donations to any branch library, one book or 100. They will be transported to the Chevy Chase Library and sorted for display at the sale.
Can I give us a date again?
Please mark your calendar for Saturday, May 4, to come to the Chevy Chase Library. We plan to have donated samples of food and baked goods there as well. See you all on the 4th.
Thank you, Ms. Murray.
Day 4.
Sheila, I got, my husband proposed to me after a meal at Chez Panisse. So if you will put my name on that, I would love to commit to purchasing that particular book, if you're willing to do that.
Are you going to donate it?
The price just went up.
I will be, I will be at the books, I'll be at the sale, and I'll, hopefully, it'll still be around for me.
Great, sounds great. Thank you very much for your time.
Flyers are coming around.
Arlene Vador, followed by Ry Bird.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council members, and city staff. I think I'm supposed to have a slide that I submitted to GTV6 come up on the screen as a visual aid?
Great.
I'm here to give you two announcements for the Associates of Brand Library and Arts Center. The first is involving a fascinating lecture and slide presentation by noted photography scholar and collector Dennis Reed, who incidentally lives in Glendale, and he'll be talking at the Central Library at 222 East Harvard this Thursday, March 28, at 7:00 p.m., about Japanese-American photographers and their work. This is an unusual story because these photographers, many of them first-generation Americans, achieved famous artists but were put into detention camps by the American government during World War II. On March 30, 1942, it became illegal if you were of Japanese ancestry. On March 30, 1942, it became illegal, if you were of Japanese ancestry, to be in possession of a camera. And that was the end of many of these people's artistic careers and hobbies. Not only has Dennis researched and developed the definitive story and collection of very rare works of art, but now he's self-published a limited edition book that will be on sale at our event, and his work is considered to be the worldwide standard on this topic. The book is making its public debut on Thursday. So once again, the program is Japanese-American Photographers: Creation, Loss, and Rediscovery at the Central Library this Thursday, March 28 at 7:00. It's free and open to the public. That's a picture of Dennis, and of course, the other picture is a beautiful work by Kira called "The Thinker." The next event is Wednesday, April 3 at 7:00 p.m. This is the first 2013 offering in our Real Art Film series, which we started last year. The film we're showing is Free Radicals: The History of Experimental Film, and it's by Pip Chaterov. This is a very personal look at the many shapes, sizes, languages, and colors of experimental film, which is a sector of the art world that is often very mysterious and about which most of us know very little. We'll be joined at this event by Adam Hyman, the Executive Director of the Los Angeles Film Forum, for a post-screening Q and A, and Film Forum has kindly agreed to partner with us on this event. So once again, it's Free Radicals: The History of Experimental Film. It's about 80 minutes in running time, and it's Wednesday, April 3, at the Central Library, also free and open to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ry Berg.
My name's Ry Berg. I'm here tonight on behalf of Walk by Glendale. And first, I want to thank the candidates who are in the room for answering our candidate's survey this year. It was great to hear about your personal experiences walking and biking. We've got two fun events coming up. The first is our Mayor's Ride with Frank Quintero, and that is on April 6 at 9:00 a.m. We'll be meeting here at City Hall for a nice, easy bike ride around Glendale. So I invite anybody who would like to come to meet us here. It's free to the public, and it's going to be a great time. And then our second event that's coming up in May, as part of Bike Month, is the Jewel City Fun and Fitness Ride. And we are doing this in partnership with the Rotary Club of Glendale, the Noon Rotary, and also the Glendale Adventist Medical Center. We've got a couple of great routes. We've got a nice, tough gear grinder route, going up and down all the hills here in, in Glendale. And then we also have the Ride and Glide, which will be about seven miles. That's going to be a nice, relaxed ride for families here in Glendale. So we would invite everyone to come out for that. And we'll also have a bicycle safety skills course there for any parents who would like to get their kids trained on the rules of the road. So I will submit these here, and I have a few additional flyers. I'm not sure if the protocol allows me to leave them at the back of the room or not. If not, I can stand at the back and hand them out. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The Mayor's Bike Ride is not going to be a fitness ride. It'll just be a cruise through the, through the city of Glendale. All right, Mr. Kasakian, would you read 8C into the record?
8C is City Manager regarding discussion on dedication of, dedicating a portion of the ARC, Adult Recreation Center Plaza area, as the potential site for the Sister City Memorial Area. C1 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Cho.
Yes, sir. This very brief report deals with an opportunity that's been presented to the city as it relates to our very robust Sister City program. As you know, we have seven different, seven different Sister Cities spread across four different countries, and the Sister City program has evolved itself and developed over the decades, beginning first with Japanese cities, then adding Mexican and Armenian cities, and increasingly Korean cities. At this point, as you know, in the Central Park area, next to the ARC, behind the library, that park is being master planned. And going back to 2011, the council was presented with a preliminary update of what that master plan could look, look like and would look like. And at that time, the council had earmarked an area within that concept for Sister Cities, for monuments, for memorials, for the different types of dedications that would be related to the commemoration of our Sister City program. Since that time, staff has been able to work through the Community Services Department and our, our Planning Division of Community Development to put together that master plan. We anticipate that the master plan will move to the Community Services and Parks Commission in the coming months. But again, we have an opportunity that we needed to bring to the council at this point to get council direction, as it relates to, specifically to dedications and memorials within the context of our Sister City program. We have been apprised by our Korean Sister City organization that they would like to bring forward a donation for a memorial, a monument, about the size of a conference table that could be situated with the proposed Sister City area within the park that commemorates the Korean Comfort Women movement that was discussed last year during Man's Inhumanity to Man, and will be discussed again, and this year's Man, Inhumanity to Man, Weak of Remembrance observances. The direction that we're seeking from council is whether or not to carve out that small area of Central Park in the area of the other, of the dedicated Sister City monuments and memorials to be used for this purpose. If the council does give us that direction, then our Korean Sister City Association will presumably be able to finalize their fundraising, that would bring the memorial to Glendale at no charge to the city. So at this point, that is the situation that we are looking at, and we would seek council direction, whether or not to allow for that dedication, that small dedication of land.
I have a question.
May I support the proposal? And I look forward to, we've talked about it a number of times. I think this is a very good idea, and I'm prepared to enact this as soon as we possibly can. Ms. Friedman?
Question, would the Korean Sister City Association pay for the installation of the monument, as well as the monument itself?
That is my understanding, and I think that's the standard that we would adhere to, to make sure that this does not become a drain on Glendale.
Well, I very much support this. We have a very large Korean population in Glendale, and the sister, the Comfort Woman issue is very important to that community, and I think that it would be an honor for Glendale to have this monument. It's my understanding it would be the first monument of its kind on the West Coast, and I think that it would go a long way in educating people of the, of the West Coast, of all of California, about what happened in Korea to those women. And it would also serve as a reminder to never allow that kind of tragedy to happen again. So I am very, very happy to see this project come forward. It won't cost anything for the city of Glendale, but it will certainly bring us a lot of pride, and we'll do a lot to, I believe, educate the population about the issue of the, the Korean Comfort Women. So I'm very thankful to the Sister City Association for bringing this project forward, and I look forward to seeing it installed very shortly.
It'll be the first outside of Seoul, actually, not just the West Coast, first time ever. Jersey. Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is an honor to have the, the Comfort Women Memorial in our park. I think it is a great idea, in general, to permit our Sister Cities to have areas in the park to place them. The Comfort Women issue is a tragic chapter, as you know. I believe last year, earlier in your term, you invited the, the Comfort Women program to come to Glendale to educate all of us. And it's great, we've got a dynamic Korean community, and that's what makes Glendale great, is that we've got many different ethnicities, and this park, this region, corner of the park, if you will, could be a great opportunity to show to everyone what makes Glendale so special, and I'm very glad the, the Korean Comfort Women Memorial will be a part of it.
Ms. Weaver.
Yeah. For a moment, a decade, I was a Sister City representative. I went to functions involving the Japanese and the Latino Sister Cities. Have to admit, I think it's languished in some areas over the years. Some Sister City groups are more active than others. This is a good cause, but I think it's premature. We have to get, finish the master planning of Central Park, which will probably include underground parking for downtown. I haven't seen anything on paper yet to show that. We have seven Sister Cities now. We could easily have eight, nine, 10 more. So whatever design come up, comes up with, it's going to have to be in the design and have room for expansion, whatever. So while I think it's a great cause, until we develop the master plan for that park, as if we start carving it up into pieces to do this and do that, we won't have a Central Park. I'm very, I pushed for many years to have parking underground at that location, because we have a lack of parking on the east side of the, of the city in that location. So while it's a great cause, this time I can't bring myself to voting to put a, the Comfort Women monument in there. It doesn't say I won't in the future, but not at this time, until we master plan.
Okay, so just so we're clear, it's not that he doesn't support it, but rather that as far as the overall plan, he doesn't feel it's clear enough. I do feel that it's clear enough. We've gone far enough in our plan to incorporate this, and in fact, I think it's going to be a perfect location for, location not only for this monument, but for the other monuments and so forth that's going to go in this section of, of the Central Park. It's right next to the Senior Center, across from the library, which we'll be redoing. So I think it's a perfect location for the monument, the perfect location for other gifts from Korean Sister Cities, or the Mexican Sister Cities, or the Armenian Sister City. This is going to be a wonderful, wonderful location. And then to the issue of the Comfort Women, I don't think there's any question that it's important that we do this. The government of Japan continues to deny that this issue took place, when in fact we know it took place. It happened in modern times, and this is a very, very small step, really, in order to try to, to push them into accepting what the whole world knows is, is true. So I think it's a great day for all of Glendale, not just for the Korean-American community, but for all of Glendale. We've taken a step and decided to basically honor the women that suffered this terrible fate and their families. Most of the women have died, but there's still many that are alive. The woman that came to speak to us last year was extremely eloquent in what she described and how she described her life. And this year, on the 26th of April, I think it is, we'll be having another program at the Glendale Public Library, and I invite the public to come to that, that commemoration. Mr. Jerry.
I have two points, but let me just follow up on your, your remarks, Mr. Mayor. So those that aren't familiar with the term Comfort Women, what they are, are a group of, basically, they were young girls who were forcibly removed from their homes by members of the Imperial Japanese Army to travel with the troops, and they were used as slaves. They were raped, they were basically held captive throughout the course of the war, and it's a terrible, of course, the lady, we, her grandma, we called her, had terrible memories of that and still cried about it when she discussed it. So when we use the term Comfort Women, that's what it is. Come to our event, though, Man's Inhumanity to Man, and we'll get, you'll be able to hear firsthand. As regard to Mr. Weaver's ideas, I do support setting some general guidelines as to the type of monuments and the number of monuments, and the size of the monuments, and whether we're going to permit lighting or water features, or whatever it might be, it'd be good to bring it back to council, to just set some general guidelines, so we, so we don't lead, mislead anyone with the number, type, size, or extent of a permissible memorial. Did you hear that, Mr. Weaver?
Although in this case-
He likes, he likes the idea, I hear.
Although in this case, it's obviously small enough that we'll be able to move forward with-
Right, we'll continue with this.
This particular one, right, for the future. All right, do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Just by the way, 8C1, Alternative 1, which was staff's recommendation.
Right. Ms. Weaver, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Mnuchin.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Eric Quintero.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, we'll move to the next item.
Returning to the top of the order.
Yeah.
8A is Director of Human Resources regarding resolutions of the city of Glendale providing for the establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the city of Glendale. 8A1 is a resolution adopting GCA and GCA confidential and hourly classification. 8A2 is a resolution adopting GMA and GMA exempt classifications.
Before we go to the item, you can, you can leave, if you want to leave the chambers, and just please be a little quiet on the way out. We're going to continue the meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Well, yes, so this is, what amounts to basically the, the final re, series of reclassifications as part of the reorganization that was implemented as part of the current fiscal year's budget. You have here, and certainly Mr. Doyle can get into the specifics, the list of general employee and management employee classifications that both exempt and non-exempt.
Mr. Chair, members of the council, this, this item is a, an amendment to the classification
and compensation resolutions affecting both GCEA and GMA work units. Whenever the city, or city departments seek to add either new classification titles or amend or modify salaries of existing classification titles, it requires an amendment of these resolutions. These actions, again, are largely a continuation of many of the reorganizations that were put forth at the beginning of this fiscal year. What we have essentially are a total of nine transactions, five of them involving just newly established classification titles. These are not necessarily new positions, they're just titles to be added to the resolution. Then we have four adjustments of existing compensations for existing job titles. Three of those involve an increase, one of those involves a decrease. The staff report does indicate a fiscal impact, and we, we really see this as a neutral cost. Many of the transactions being put forth here are resulting from, from reorganization and the elimination of certain positions to pay for some of these transactions. So I can go through each of these individually, or if you prefer, I can answer questions if you have them. We have department heads here as well.
Are there any questions or comments? I don't have any. I have a motion.
I'll move 8A1 and 2.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Mnuchin.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Eric Quintero.
Yes.
Next, please.
8B is Director of Community Development regarding presentation of initial concepts alternatives for the Space 134 project. B1 is motion providing direction to staff.
Ms. Cho.
Yes, sir. We have for you, really a blue-sky look at some highly conceptual, very long-term possibilities with respect to some thinking, some of it's new thinking, some of it's old thinking, about how to increase the amount of park and open space area in the built environment. And that primarily focuses on covering the freeways and/or flood control channels. Mike Nielsen, our mobility planner, will give you the overview. Mike?
Mayor, just wanted to emphasize, this is a 40- to 50-year plan costing multi-millions of dollars.
Multi-billion dollar.
Multi-million dollars.
Billion.
Billion, excuse me. Well, 50 years, so don't anybody get, think it's coming tomorrow. It's long range. Not in our lifetime.
No, maybe part of it will come in our lifetime.
Don't bet on it.
I'm hoping for just part of it to come in our lifetime.
I'm a lot younger than you guys, so I might, I might hear around.
Go ahead.
So following that, tonight, we will be presenting initial concepts studying a park over the 134 freeway, and these studies were developed as a result of a grant received from the Southern California Association of Governments. The Southern California Association of Governments has funded other similar concepts across the region, including those- across the region, including those in downtown Los Angeles, Hollywood, Santa Monica, and Ventura. With this grant funding, Melendros Design Partners and their consultant team have collaborated with a city staff team composed of staff from community development, library arts and culture, public works, and community services and parks over the past several months to develop concepts city council and the public will see tonight. Staff requests comments, which will be incorporated into a final report that will be submitted to the Southern California Association of Governments. This report can be used to pursue additional grants to fund outreach, engineering, and economic analyses to further pursue a park over the 134 freeway. With that, I introduce Melanie Smith, Principal Melendros of Design Partners, who will go over these concepts in greater detail.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks to all of you for your indulging us and listening to our presentation tonight, and I love the fact that you're already sparring about the project, so you're thinking about it, and this is a great, great place to start. So clearly, clearly, this is a, this is a grant funded of a first, small step in a larger project. And it's, it's clearly about creating open space for the city, and it's a, it was take, it takes off really from the good work that the city's already done, and as an idea, a seed that was planted in the city's downtown-specific plan for this notion of capping, putting a lid over, putting a deck over the 134 freeway. So many communities are rethinking their infrastructure, ways in which infrastructure can be transformed to, to, to better reconnect the fabric of cities, to also play a multipurpose, multifunctional role about connectivity and open space and placemaking. So we, we've jumped off with your staff and spent a lot of time thinking about, as we said, very high-level first look at this. We've, so we've jumped off from the, the specific plan itself for the, for the downtown, also the work that Glendale has really done in its own look at branding, and thinking about the downtown and ways of creating a, a place to be at an 18, 18-hour general plan. So what's the context for this? Who's, who's doing things like this? Why do we care about urban open space? Urban Land Institute has started giving an annual award for great urban open spaces, not only because of the placemaking aspects, the open space and the value of that itself, but also because of the follow-on economic benefit that comes from good open space, the concomitant increases in rents, in, in activity and economic activity around spaces like this. So hence the City Garden example, ULI Award winner in St. Louis. Grand Park, another example closer to home in downtown Los Angeles, not a cap park, neither of these are cap parks, but an open space built over a lot of infrastructure that's really starting to transform the downtown of Los Angeles. So to a cap, a recent cap park just construction, just just opened in Dallas. Clyde Warren is the name of the energy executive who purchased the naming rights to the facility. It's about five acres. This is a shot of it under construction, over the freeway, through the city, and this is a shot of it completed. Really different, varying scales of spaces, for places for the community to gather, and an active friends-of-the-park entity already in place to program it. Tarralta Park, an example, and the inset here in, in San Diego, actually a mitigation for highway construction, a highway widening project. Other SCAG-supported local examples of projects like this that are being pursued in downtown Los Angeles, Park 101, Hollywood, over the 101 in Ventura, connecting downtown of Ventura, Ventura to the beach, and various cappings that have been talked about over the 10 in Santa Monica. There are a number of planning priorities we've been looking at. I'll focus on a number of these throughout the presentation. So we think that there is a, a variety of character of spaces which could be created in a capping over, over the 134, from neighborhood park spaces that really respond to the neighborhoods that are, that are on either side of the freeway, and that could benefit from green spaces and, and places for active recreation, walking, bicycling, et cetera, and also more civic scaled spaces, for instance, between Brand and Central, that would take on a different character and could even support development, perhaps conference event center. We've taken a look of, as we said, a high-level look at the possibilities, and buildings have been built on caps all over the country. Again, this is a large, this is a big idea, and what do they say about eating an elephant, you do it in many small bites? I think that's what you all were just talking about. So we're thinking about this in terms of conceptually a multi-phased approach, a first-phase approach, really thinking about the connectivity improvements that might be made, both over the freeway, improving the bridges, the bridge structures that exist, additional pedestrian facilities, connecting, reconnecting from north to south within the community. Also, being mindful of the work that the city's already done, better trying to connect to the, to the LA River and to Griffith Park, thinking about Verdugo Wash to the north of the 134 and improving green, green linkages along that, and really facilitating an east-west connectivity around this Space 134. In a midterm, we start thinking about actually decking the freeway, capping the freeway. An obvious place to start, again, the seed planted in your specific plan for the downtown between Brand and Central, that's shown in the capping, the cap that you start to see emerge to the, on the left side of the screen. This is just one take at what might occur, what could occur, you know, something like a 50-50 split, this is hard and soft, showing about 100,000, I think, of development, but also a lot, a lot of green space, civic scaled space. A variety of, of characters obviously could emerge on a cap, caps like this. On the, on the eastern end of the study area, the other cap spaces, we start to think about emerging at the beginning are more neighborhood scaled, local, small-scale recreation spaces, totlot, again, and that's really oriented around Geneva, one of your important safe routes to school connections, and, and really thinking about reconnecting neighborhoods there. So the kinds of spaces that were, that we're thinking about illustrated here. We think obviously it's important in a community like, you were just talking about the diversity of this community, a diversity of types of attractions to, 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 to bring people in, and people of different ages also, I think it's really critical. So in a long term, and we talked, we can argue about how long, a long-term view of an entire cap, we could probably achieve about 28 acres of open space, new open space within the community from the, the civic sort of cap we were discussing, it, between Brand and Central, to the more neighborhood scaled spaces that might be more recreation-oriented, passive orientation toward the community to, to the east. And we've been trying to think about both ends, both gateways, if you will, into the community, both from the west and from the east. Glendale Avenue is another important connector. There are challenges with Glendale now for pedestrian and bike connectivity from north to south, so we've been thinking about that area as well. Tough, tougher to achieve in terms of on-ramps, off-ramps, but again, these are ideas, big ideas about a way in which a facility like this might really contribute to reconnecting the fabric of the community. So in a, in a big, you know, big idea, a big loop of different kinds of activities, as I said, to relate to the different facets of the community, different demographics, different age groups, from drawing on Glendale's natural setting to its local cuisines, its local ethnicities. Could, could there be vertical elements on a cap like this? Places to see and to be seen, places that really could, again, other things that would put Glendale on the map. And then recreation spaces to really respond to the needs of residents in the community. Thinking about bikes, thinking about the, the potential in the future for things that the city's already considering, zip cars, electric car charging, all of those kinds of things could find a home in a space like this. Clearly, so we've talked about placemaking, we've talked about open space potential, certainly connectivity, and enhancing connectivity at a bunch of different levels is really a critical thing to consider. We've been thinking about the city's transit future, and whether that might be in a light-rail scenario, really down the center of the 134 freeway, and whether or not that, then thinking about accommodating portals, stations, transit plazas in spaces like this, or whether that might manifest as a bus rapid transit at-grade, at-surface kind of alignment, that again, could be accommodated at-surface in, in station areas adjacent to the cap. But thinking about bike connections and improving those connections, those are always such hard things to achieve, getting folks back and forth over freeways is, is, is a challenge in every community, so thinking about that east and in the center and in the west of the cap. Clearly, there are benefits, I think we've talked about those, from the physical space that, that is realized in neighborhoods in Glendale that really need the space the most, and then those concomitant economic benefits that, that, that come along with it, those, those spurs in, in, in rents, in development opportunities, et cetera, et cetera. There are also costs, and we've talked about that already, and we're looking at certainly all of the other cap studies that have been considered in the region, and that range of costs that, that folks are coming up with as they study these projects. We, a part of our deliverables will be a very conceptual cost estimate as well for the kinds of spaces we've been talking about tonight, so that there's a range of, of costs that folks are, are considering. And frankly, the facility that I, that I showed at the beginning, Kyle Warren Park, falls right, you know, within this range. It's, it is around, I think, the 20, 22 million acre mark. Hard costs are part of that. Also, we wouldn't want to forget, you, of course, wouldn't want to forget the soft costs relating to programming, operating, maintaining a space like this.
Part of the thinking there would be that whatever gets built on top of this cap, the revenue generated would be then channeled back into maintaining, whether it's hotel, conference space, or what have you, but you see there on the estimated costs, all of those combined, plus, you know, Glendale's concept would easily get you into about $2.5 billion. So the, the federal government is really the, the, the big player in this, and, and that's justified, considering what the investment would be.
Certainly, and I think all of the, all of the entities that are considering facilities like this, studying facilities like this, thinking about that range of potential funding sources from local to state to federal, certainly, and the range of grant funding potential for both the studies and the design, as well as the, the development of spaces like this.
The first phase over, between Brand and Central, how much is that in terms of acreage? Two acres?
Something like five.
Five acres?
Yeah, mhm.
So some of the, if you go back to the other slide, well, the one that had the breakdown in Santa Monica, Seattle, and so forth, there you go. So nine acres in Seattle was 9.5 acres.
And that was a partial cap scenario, yeah.
Right, Santa Monica, five acres, 17 million. So that I assume is just the slab and supporting columns and so forth.
The, the numbers, these numbers are taking into account some level of treatment of the decks as well.
Finish, okay, well, that's not bad.
Yes, it's not just structure.
Not that expensive, actually.
Mhm, thank you. Talked about benefits, we talked about costs, we talked about potential funding. So the other note we just wanted to make, in terms of lessons we've learned in, in studying these other examples and these other case studies, clearly, again, relationships between the city, between the philanthropic community, really critical, these notions of finding the champions, forming, you know, the friends-of group, really figures prominently in all of the cases we've been looking at. There are certainly, as we know, policy considerations, obviously work with Caltrans and even the California Transportation Commission to work out policy issues relating to using these, these infrastructure spaces in a new way, in a way we haven't done in California, so clearly need to be aware of that, and taking advantage, as the point's already been made, of funding at all levels. So we, we were, we, we welcome your feedback, of course, thank you for your, for your time, and we will be folding in any input that we get from you into a final report, which will go to the Southern California Association of Governments.
All right, as a representative from, for the Southern California Association of Governments, I want to thank you. SCAG had these Compass Grants, and our planning department jumped on the, jumped on the offer, and as a result, we're moving along, so. All right, any comments? I have some cards. All right, we have Alex Barsoff, followed by Scott Lowe.
My name is Alex Barsoff. I just want to say that I strongly support this concept. I think that's, that's long overdue in the City of Glendale. The South Glendale is notorious for not having enough open space. I think this would kind of bridge the gap between north and south and allow us to have the open space that we need in downtown Glendale. There's thousands of residents between Colorado and the freeway, there's thousands more coming. I think this would be a great asset, and I strongly support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott Lowe.
Hi, I'm Scott Lowe. I'm here to encourage you to support exploring this as an option. You've all voted repeatedly to expand dense residential development near this proposed site, which is in an area with very little park space, and there really is a need for this kind of bold thinking to create a livable environment for the many residents nearby. I recently read Glendale's first comprehensive general plan from 1928. It's on the city's website. Reading it now, it's hard to imagine the level of ambition that those early Glendaleans brought to that plan and their vision of what the city could be. They had so much pride in their community and optimism about what they could achieve, that they put all kinds of ambitious ideas in the plan for making Glendale a beautiful and livable place. And many of them were built, playgrounds, community centers, swimming pools, civic art, street trees, and boulevards. Other elements in the 1928 plan were never built, for instance, a network of scenic parks along the Verdugo Wash, which is quite similar to what the, what Los Angeles and Glendale are finally building now along the LA River. Imagine if the civic leaders in Glendale then, just like you're all here now, with this concept before you today, had built that network of parks along the Verdugo Wash in the 20s. Think about how many millions of citizens in Glendale over 90 years would have enjoyed those amenities. Think of the memories they would have, and what a worthwhile investment that would have been. In retrospect, the cost of building it in the 20s would even seem cheap. Though it may be difficult, we can still do great things in Glendale that serve the needs of our citizens, not just in response to crises, but by moving forward to keep Glendale a beautiful city for future decades and centuries to come. Thank you. Thanks.
Herbert Milano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, staff. I, I believe that a concept such as this one, that truly creates places of significance of open space the city has needed for a very, very long time. What I began to wonder is if a plan such as this one presented at this stage of the election season is simply something that will happen, or it's simply just a plan. And the reason why I'm a bit cynical is because it's been 12 years of continual advocacy towards having open space in Southern Glendale. In the 1990s, we have a downtown, Greater Downtown Specific Plan, and it allowed, and it planned for about 16 acres of open space. That never happened. We had plans for parkland that eventually became part of the Americana for open space for the general public. That didn't happen. We had plans for parkland where the fashion center is today. The parkland never happened. The, so the history has been that even though the information is in the general plan, and in the land use element, and in the park and open space element, we never really carried through because we never put into place a definitive and firm strategic plan. I think that one of the best jobs for anyone to take as a career in life is a planning, in the planning department, to really get to plan a city and create environments that are truly livable, and make the quality of life of everyone truly memorable. And I see that when I travel in business, many cities that have absolutely a framework and a mindset to create those open spaces and create the, improve the quality of life. It is my hope that you put into place a definitive structure for funding it and carrying it forward and measuring every year the progress towards it. One of my favorite websites, and I want that I encourage everyone interested in a new urbanism, is pps.org. It's Project for Public Spaces. And I believe that one of the candidates for office, Ms. Landergan, has two of her projects listed in pps.org. It is when you begin to expose yourself to what other cities are doing as a truly creative, wonderful places for the general community, that we begin to think, you know what, irrespective of the constraints that we have, irrespective of the dead-high density that we have in South Glendale, that we truly make an effort to overcome those constraints and truly create a livable environment that everyone can look towards participating in. So it is my hope that you take these plans, put into a strategic plan, and definitive have a budget assigned to that quality of life measure. This is a great idea, let's hope we can make it happen.
Okay, that's a final card. Comments or questions? Comments or questions? Mr. Weaver.
Let me, oops, that was quick. Let me reminisce a little. Over 40 years ago, when I was working for the Corps of Engineers, I and other engineers talking, I talked about high-speed rail on the LA River. So I worked for the Corps of Engineers. Said, the curves are gentle, the real estate is own, you could get dual-use out of them. You could put parking structures over the LA River and have the high-speed rails come in and go out of them. Years later, I talked about covering the Verdugo Wash. I handled all the permitting for the Corps of Engineers, and I permitted just about every single mile of bicycle trails on the LA River. And my conscience, my thinking then was, we got it connected under the Verdugo Wash, because we could take bicycle rails from the LA River and clear up to the Oakland Country Club. That was feasible. And I worked at developing an air rights ordinance with the County of Los Angeles to cover our flood control channels, because I said usable space we're running out of, and we have flood control channels sitting there, underutilized. So we got an air rights ordinance created. That, in Glendale, I permitted the Hilton Hotel. The only way we could do it is covering the Verdugo Wash, which is in the front of the hotel, and all the green open space that's all over the flood control channel. We had to create an ordinance with the county to make that happen. So looking at connecting the bicycle trails, thing that isn't looked at in this report is really connectivity from the junction of the Verdugo Wash and the LA River, connecting the bicycle paths that are there now, and getting them up into the residential areas on the Verdugo Wash. I had a similar project in Santa Barbara. It was going to be a new flood control channel, and I designed it to have cantilevered walls so you could put bicycle trails on the cantilevered walls over the wash, because it was very narrow constraints with homes and everything adjacent to it. That project ended up never being built, not because of me, but other reasons. But I think it's feasible on the Verdugo Wash, and I've talked to a structural engineer, a good friend of mine who lives in Glendale, and he said it would be very costly. You've got to span the wash, you've got to put down the piles, they have to be independent of the channel walls. It gets very costly. But if you did block by block, starting from San Fernando Road, the connectivity, and as funds were available, taking it on up, that would probably be wide enough in some cases to put soccer fields on, and walking paths, bicycle. I talked about this 15 years ago, but, you know, the cost is very hard to deal with. Now I see the main emphasis being put on the freeway, which I think would be even more costly, because the width of the freeway is much greater than the flood control channel. And interestingly enough, if you cover enough of the 134 freeway, you put the freeway into a tunnel, just like they're talking about on the 710 freeway. It'd all be covered, freeway'd be underneath it. Remarkable. It's a nice idea what has come up with. I know I won't live to see even the first phase done. You're going to have a multi-agency project to deal with. I used to deal with them all the time, with multiple agencies, federal, state, local, county, they all get involved. And you're going to do one monster environmental document, and it's going to involve a lot of people in doing that. It'll take years just to get to the construction phase with a lot of grant money. I don't know where locals, the state, or the federal government's going to come up with billions or multi-millions of dollars and billions of dollars for little old Glendale, California in the near future. Not in my lifetime, probably. Great concept. You can go plan it, you can master plan it. Short of design, you can do all that. But to actually consider it, I'm just trying to get realistic, it isn't going to happen very quick. If I was to pick one, I'd pick the Verdugo Wash first, which I know will be cheaper, and give connectivity on the bicycle paths. So, good report, I just think you ought to throw, report back to throw in about the Verdugo Wash, clear down, past Central, clear down. Thank you.
I think this is going to happen in my lifetime, okay?
Well, you're younger than I am.
I agree with you on the Verdugo Wash. That's certainly an opportunity that's worth pursuing. But this particular exercise, we've heard about it for many years, this isn't anything new, the Compass Grant perhaps is elaborated, but this is not new. And I think it is feasible, and you don't have to look at the entire stretch, that I think is a very, very long-term project. But certainly between Central and Brand, I think that's important enough, and let's call it lucrative enough, for a private sector investor, that this may work, combining all the different grants and all the different opportunities out there. It's certainly worth pursuing, without question, because I think it adds a lot to the city and what we can do in terms of having. This isn't a park that is going to have soccer fields or that type of, of, I'm tired, we've had a long day. Activity, that's the word I was looking for. But it's certainly a park that could provide a lot of open space and some commercial opportunities, and certainly recreational opportunities. So I'm all for it. I'm happy we've taken it to this level, and hopefully we can continue to push forward. Any other, Ms. Friedman?
No, I agree. I think it's something that we should continue to analyze and plan for, and try to line up whatever grant funding that's available. And at a certain point, then it could very well be that the funding's available, we'll be in the right place to receive that funding, because we'll be ready to go, or closer to being ready to go. And we do have to make these kinds of grand plans. We're a big city, and we're a great city, and there's no reason we can't have an amenity like this. There's a cap park in La Canyada. I assume it was funded by Caltrans, I'm not exactly sure who funded that, but it certainly shows the feasibility of doing something. And it could be grand, but it could start out being a smaller section, as was said, it could be Brand to Central, and build, you know, over time. But there's no reason, the only reason we can't do this is money, and I think that that will be something that we can overcome over time. So I'm very happy to see such a comprehensive analysis, and such an interesting, intriguing plan. And I hope that we can continue to receive those grants to move forward, to do the engineering, to do whatever analysis we have to do to be in shape to receive funding should some become available in the future.
Ms. Njari.
Well, there's, actually, the city of Glendale has some plans for that. I know I saw them with John O'Bagdanian several years ago regarding, as we were discussing, a transit line, which was going to come from Burbank, Glendale, and Pasadena. There are some plans, I saw that. We do have some funding, actually, as long as we can tie it to regional mobility, there's $280 million of Measure R funds that are available for our Arroyo Seco region. I'm not saying that that's where we'll spend those funds, but there is money out there. And in general, though, I do support the idea. A lot of it is dreaming, it's visionary, and I think we need to start thinking that way. If nothing more, if we can just get this green loop going as a first step, I think for not a whole lot of money, it'd be a great idea, just to start that idea. Certainly, the covering of the wash by the Hilton Hotel is a very good example, the La Canyada Memorial Park over the freeway is another great example. So let's, I think it's a great exercise to look at possibilities and get our thinking caps on, and look for funding, and look for feasibility on these things. So I support the exercise.
All right, great. Do I have a motion?
No. Motion directing staff, what do you want?
Directions clear to staff?
Yeah.
Are you moving forward?
Forward.
Forward, forward, forward.
We don't need a motion.
We love the idea.
All right.
Let's make it happen in our lifetime. Make it in the mayor's lifetime.
The motion is to make it happen, yeah, in my lifetime.
That's true.
I'll second Mr. Weaver's motion.
A motion to direct staff to continue the study.
Need a roll call.
Second.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Next, please.
At 9 under 9A is hearings, director of public works regarding Federal Transit Administration, FTA, Section 5310 grant application. At 9A1 is resolution-making findings that there is a no nonprofit agency readily available to provide paratransit services to the elderly and disabled in the Glendale Dial-A-Ride service area.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Federal regulation requires that state can allocate a portion of funds specifically for paratransit for disabled and senior to a public agency if there is not a readily available nonprofit organization that can take on such responsibility. At this point, it does require a resolution certifying such. So at this point, the public hearing before you is to consider a resolution that would recognize that there is no nonprofit agency readily available to handle that paratransit service. We would submit that and thus be eligible for the federal funding.
Can I ask a question about Dial-A-Ride? Because I saw that this, we would be purchasing four new vehicles to replace four old vehicles.
Correct.
Dial-A-Ride's a great service, but one of the complaints that I get, and not just in Glendale, but I've heard this from my grandmother in Florida, and, you know, from many elderly people, is that you have to wait a long time to get picked up, and, you know, sometimes you'll be waiting for hours. Is there any way with this new funding, with this grant, that we can try to improve that pickup rate for people?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, councilmember Friedman, this grant is very narrowly defined. This is for capital replacement only, and of the six vehicles we have, all are pretty long in the tooth, and just gives us four new ones. But you're right, that is a complaint. We've made a lot of improvements in the last couple of years and hear less and less of those complaints. But what oftentimes happens is there's a sense that this is almost a personal medical service, while it's very, very popular. So to the best of our ability, we try to get people within the timeframe that we've said that we would and that we promised, and I think we've been pretty successful in that particular arena.
Is there a minimum amount of time that we try to get people?
Well, we try, when we schedule ahead, we try to keep wait times down. But when you take somebody to a medical appointment, for instance, you can imagine that there's no real way to pin down how long that medical appointment may take. So we have you call us when you're done, and then it all depends on where we're at, how many folks are ahead of you. It could take a little longer if there's a greater rush. So that's, with primarily, you know, a great many of these being medical appointments, there's a lot of uncertainty with those.
I realize it's not a personal taxi service, but, you know, we certainly want to encourage people to use this instead of driving if they're not able. So just a comment that as we go, you know, go ahead, just to, we really need to try to make sure that it's functional and that people, you know, don't wait hours.
No, no, and we don't want that, and we've worked pretty closely and kept a tight rein on our contractor to make sure that we keep that.
I'm glad you hear it.
At least times to a minimum.
Okay.
Open and close the, open and.
Yeah, one open, close the.
I don't have any cards, so I'll close the public hearing.
I'll move 9A1.
Got you.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Next time, is oral communication discussion is limited time, is not part of this agenda, speakers allow five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. See Madre Mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
I forgot to announce that this Saturday, March 30th, from 1:00 to 4:00, at the Pacific Community Center, we're having our annual Caesar Chavez celebration. It's actually the 12th annual celebration. So it's Saturday, March 30th, at Pacific Community Center, which is Pacific Edison, the complex there. Our guest speaker is going to be Ruben Duran, and then there'll be performances, mariachi, flamenco, the Edison Elementary School kids will also perform, lots of activities, it's always a great event. So please, please show up Saturday, March 30th, at Pacific Community Center. All right, I have lots of oral communication cards. Start with Tony Lombardo, followed by Gina Moore.
Hi, I'm Tony Lombardo, I've got a property on 1110 South Glendale Avenue, and I have the sprinkler, and I've got the store, it's been closed for five years, and the bill is coming high, high, every year. And every two months, I pay $520, and that's a little too much money for the bill there. That's only two units, I've got a sprinkler, and the building has been closed for five years, you know, no rent.
Empty space. There's still the fire extinguisher.
The fire extinguisher's there, no fire, nothing, and we don't use no water at all, just four-inch pipe here today, no water waste. I want to say, why they charging too much money?
All right, well, look, you know, we don't respond to each speaker, unfortunately, you're going to have to sit down. And then when the oral communications is over, then we can direct.
That's my son.
Mr. Zern will sit there with you. Thank you.
It's helping.
Have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Gina Moore, followed by Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Gina Moore. My husband and I are lifelong residents of the city of Glendale. We've lived in the woodlands and owned our home for 35 years. I read an article in the news press on the 15th of this month for the Glendale infrastructure upgrades to benefit bike riders, and that the city has applied for a $2.2 million grant to install bike lanes along Verdugo Road and Canyada. In the 35 years I've lived in the woodlands, I've seen maybe a handful of bicyclists on Canyada. The most we ever see are the weekend members of bicycle groups, and that's not every weekend. So because you can get a grant doesn't mean you need to get a grant, and that it seems, though there hasn't been anything published yet, I'd urge you to consider this when it comes to you, that there's a lot of cars, there's a lot of parking, that's all going to be done away with, most likely, and it seems ill-conceived as the bike lanes for La Crescent Avenue was. So I just wanted to give you my two cents.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Tony Passarella, followed by Mike Moehl.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and viewing public. My name is Tony Passarella. I'm a 27-year resident of the city of Glendale. And via video in a moment here, I hope, party, I want to introduce you to Liz Barris. Liz is a smart meter expert and activist, and she's currently in the process of doing, putting together a citizen collective, citizen lawsuit, basically suing every utility company in the state of California. I urge everybody to listen very closely to this and see if she's believable. And if she is believable, that would disqualify every member of council who voted yes on smart meters. And for the record, Roth Manukian is the only one who voted against the smart meters.
It is a confusing issue, because I do not vouch, say, your personal experiences with your health issues.
You do not, you do not.
I don't doubt them, you know, I don't question them. On the other hand, all the, you know, scientists, regulators, and such I've spoken to, have said that, you know, to the best of their knowledge, this shouldn't be happening because of the meters, you know?
Right, well, you're speaking.
Right, well, you're speaking to scientists and regulators that are run by the industry, and those scientists are all funded by the industry. When you fund your own studies, you know, there's a study showing when you fund a study and you own the product that you're studying, your study is going to come out 80% negative. I mean, 80% of the time, it's going to come out negative, meaning no effect, like.
Yeah, well, I've heard that on, you know, like pharmaceuticals and stuff like that.
No, it's true with any study. Any industry that sponsors a study, that study's going to come out in that industry's favor 80% of the time. That's, I think it's published, peer-reviewed, published, that study.
Yeah, that wouldn't be surprising. Although, once again, extrapolating from the general case to the specific case is always tricky. You've got to make sure you're dealing with the specifics of it.
Well, it's all, it's actually, the Class 2B carcinogen is all World Health Organization, it's all electromagnetic radiation in the RF spectrum, okay? All RF. So it's not just cell phones. They only use cell phones because now there's a big body count in Sweden, and so we have dead bodies to go ahead and give it a, oh, it might cause cancer. By the way, the World Health Organization is also run by the industry. For them to come to that kind of a resolution on this, and it's purely, I'm told, because lawsuits cannot be won on Class 2B, that's why they put it in Class 2B.
Correct.
Yeah. But the fact of the matter is that there's enough epidemiology, which is the study of the illness in human populations, to give it that kind of a classification. That means it can cause cancer in humans, and they're admitting that.
Yeah.
By the way, a bunch of lawsuits have been won in Europe and Australia on brain cancer and cell phones, and electrosensitivity, meaning exposure to this radiation, not just a cellphone. We're talking about all wireless products right now. But the thing about smart meters is it's a personal, direct assault on you right in your own home, 24/7, and you have no choice in the matter, unless you want to pay a couple of hundred bucks a year not to have it. And you're still going to be exposed to the smart grid, by the way, even if you don't have a meter on your home and it's analog. Your neighbors are going to have smart meters, or they're going to put up a collector meter in front of your house like they did with Julie, and she had to sell her house because she became sensitive, she became electrosensitive from the smart grid in her neighborhood. She actually opted out.
Liz, what, how?
I'm going to go. Thank you, I'll be touched.
You're welcome.
Liz, how have the smart meters affected your life, and what are your symptomologies?
Well, the smart meters have affected my life. I can no longer, it's cute, dog. I can no longer go into, for instance, Santa Monica, okay? I have a hard time driving down my street. I feel the pulses. It's very unusual to feel pulses, but I'm called electrosensitive, and that means that I feel them. Your cells feel them, but you might not feel them. But your cells are feeling it. You might not know, you might just come down with some illness out of nowhere one day. Oh, gee, leukemia, huh, how did that happen? You know, well, it may have happened because you've been exposed to things that people weren't telling you could cause it. And this is one of those things. So it affected me personally. I slept in my car for seven months when I had a, actually was a cousin of a smart meter. It was just a digital meter, sending pulses. And I had to sleep in my car for seven months until I went to court and resettled with my landlord, and I did move. But, you know, nobody should have to go through that. Nobody should have to be sleeping in their car when they're paying $1,600 a month for their beautiful apartment, just because it's contaminated by radiation from a smart meter or from a digital meter. By the way, the new analog meters that are Edison-approved, those things have antennas in them, and they're smart-chipped or smart-chip-ready, meaning the utility can come by when you're not there. And they know when you're there or when you're not by the smart meter. They come by, and they just stick a chip in there, and boom, you're smart. Or they turn you on remotely, or whatever.
Okay, Mike Moehl, followed by Alfred Orion.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Moehl. Well, here we go again. This council today discussed at 3:00 PM another mega-complex project at 607 through 633 North Central, a project of 315 apartments. A second project at 526 through 540 North Central with 192 apartments for a total of 507 apartments. I repeat myself, 507 apartments. These two projects, right across from the new Verdugo Gardens, with 220 apartments, which this council had approved just a couple of months ago. All of these mega-complexes are at the corner of Central and the 134 freeway, with a total of 727 apartments. What is this thing, what is this council thinking? Downtown Glendale will be a disaster once these three complexes and other approved complexes with 2,300 apartments come through the pipeline. Is this council planning to make downtown Glendale look like New York City? New York City, London, Paris, before these three cities grew, already had their proper infrastructure in place. For example, the metro system for these three cities was already built in the 1800s, way before these cities grew. This council is doing the complete opposite. We are approving all of these mega-complexes without any proper traffic circulation infrastructures. This council will be responsible for creating high-density living with worsening traffic congestion and without adequate parking in downtown. Now this council will tell the public the reason we are allowing more apartments and mega condo complexes in downtown is because we downzone our residential neighborhoods. Counsel, that is not correct. I will give you just two examples. In the northwest neighborhood where Councilwoman Laura Freeman lives, at 518 Glenwood Road, a single-family dwelling was demolished in order to build six condo units. Now we have on one lot, six additional families on a residential street. Another example at 327 through 331 Salem Street, which is a residential street, two single-family dwellings were demolished in order to build 44 unit, affordable rental units. Now we have two lots and 44 additional families living where there used to be only two families. These two examples that I just cited are just creating a high-density and residential neighborhoods. The city has been taking residential streets piece by piece and destroying single-family homes in order to build apartments and condos where there used to be only one family on each of these lots. Regarding the 44 rental units on Salem that are for veterans like myself and Eric Quintero, that's commendable. But what are, but why are we putting these, why are we putting our veterans in a high-density area? On another matter to note, what is going to happen when our landfill is allowed to fill up with mega-complex with their trash? We have approximately 16 years left on our landfill's lifespan. And also, what would happen tomorrow if we have a drought and the metropolitan water district requires Glendale to conserve water once again? On a completely different matter, the civil grand jury of Los Angeles County released their findings about Glendale Water and Power on March 5 regarding the past water transfers in violation of Proposition 218, and the plan by this council to increase our electrical rates without voter's approval in violation of Proposition 26. Let me quote a paragraph from the grand jury report. While the grand jury understands the fiscal challenges facing cities such as Glendale, it is not permissible for the city to use Glendale Water and Power as its piggy bank to satisfy budgetary shortfalls. Rather, the city should consider alternate revenue sources and/or submit its rate structure for GWP to the citizens of Glendale for their approval by a two-thirds majority vote in compliance with Proposition 218 and 26. I hope our city manager and city attorney will take this report very seriously and stop misleading the public. Thank you. My name is Mike Moehl.
That project will be discussed next week, by the way. We haven't discussed it yet. Alfred Orion, followed by Charles Hooker.
Good evening, councilmen, councilmembers and mayor. I just shared my thoughts with you. Again, I thank you for this opportunity to voice my opinion in reference to what is written on this paper. I just want to let you know, I didn't write it, but I'm going to read it. And I hope that this will be of value to the Glendale residents. "The public is entitled to honesty and integrity from the elected officials whom we entrust with power," said the United States Attorney Andrea Barat Jr. "The kind of conduct is an effort to the voters who follow the law and play by the rules, and who have a right to expect their elected officials to do the same." I didn't write it, okay? "The taxpayers associated regarding application of Proposition 218 and 26. The grand jury also received a January 6, 2010, report of the Sacramento State Grand Jury, various appellate and the trial court decisions interpreting Proposition 218 and 26, implementing guides for Proposition 218 and Proposition 26, produced by the League of California Cities and other material provided to it by the city of Glendale. The background: Glendale Water and Power provides water and electric service to property owners and citizens of Glendale. Under certain provisions of the city's charter, and the city is permitted to transfer up to 25% of the operating revenue of the GWP surplus fund to the city's general reserve fund. No apparent effort has been made to determine the impact of these transfers on the GWP ability to find needed repairs and enhance to its infrastructure. However, the city proposes through an April 2, 2013, special elections requiring only a simple majority vote to amend and clarify its charter provisions by deleting references to a need for a GWP surplus fund and other special accounts, and to just maintain a general revenue fund, and to establish a budgeted item appropriation from GWP, equalling 25% of its operating revenues. For the fiscal year 2007, eight through 2010 and 11, the city transferred its general fund from GWP electric revenue totaling approximately 76, 75.6 million, and from water revenue approximately 16.5 million, a total of $92 million, taxpayers' dollars." I don't know if it's true or not, but I believe the civil grand jury would not write this if they didn't feel that it was of value to them. And I just want to let you know, election time, there's 12 candidates. The people have the right to choose whoever they feel is appropriate for this position, and I wish you well.
Charles Hooker, followed by Harry Zavos.
Mayor, councilman, my name is Charlie Hooker, born in the city of Glendale and still here. But I want to be sure and ask everybody, please, on April the 2nd, be sure and do your civic duty and vote, vote, vote. Please vote. I'm sort of ashamed of the city of Glendale. I received my sample ballot and my booklet, and I'm proud of being my Hispanic heritage. And I noticed that was omitted from my booklet. I don't know why, but apparently, we're a dying breed. So I hope, next time around, that there will be a change on our council, and we will have some more Hispanic votes and council people running. I am really ashamed of Glendale. Our streets are named with the Spanish heritage names. Verdugo Road is the main drag in Glendale, and I'm, my street is named after a Hispanic name. And it's really a shame that Glendale could put out something, a ballot, with not having the Spanish language on it. That is really a slight. So I'm asking all people of Mexican heritage to please turn out in force and turn out what we have now, and get some new blood in there. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Harry Zavos, followed by John Rando.
Slides. Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos, and as the complainant, I'm gratified by the grand jury report that was released ahead of schedule because of the upcoming April 2 election, and which is critical of the city's transfer of GWP monies. I repeatedly come before the council to make the point that the only charter authorization for transfers is of GWP monies that are surplus monies. In those presentations, I tried to direct attention to the analysis I made of GWP transfers and rates that can be seen by going to www.oggc.org/harrypdf. With the publication of the grand jury report, I feel free to tell you that these, those materials were prepared for and submitted to the grand jury. I was publicly ignored by the city when I showed that GWP transfers violate the charter because they are made regardless of whether there are, there is a GWP surplus, but the charter provides that transfers can only come from surplus, can only come from monies left over after all GWP needs are met. The grand jury confirms this point at page three of its report. Meanwhile, the city was busily putting together Measure B, which does away with the requirement that only GWP surplus monies can be transferred. The grand jury confirms this point at page two of its report. In spite of the fact that Measure B makes this dramatic substantive change, the city, with the aid of the city attorney, four members of the council, and yes, the Glendale News Press editorial board, is trying to sell the measure merely as one that streamlines accounting procedures. Do not be fooled. The issue with Measure B is not whether GWP transfers can be made, rather, the issue is whether they can be made only from GWP surplus, or whether they can be made regardless of whether there is a GWP surplus. No, on Measure B protects the utility. Do not be fooled.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
The issue is whether GWP monies to the tune of 21.
Quiet. Time. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, I believe obviously Mr. Zavos and any other resident who comes to the dais is able to speak on what they think the legal effect of Measure B is, but to advocate expressly for or against a ballot measure violates the council policy that the council adopted in 2001. We've been pretty lenient on it, but I believe express advocacy is something that you, as the chairperson of this meeting, has authority to regulate.
Well, obviously, you're not going to be lenient with me.
So, Mr. Zavos, you are, you are an attorney, so you understand what the city.
I understand that you've been lenient to others, but you will not be lenient to me.
Well, because we're not allowing electioneering.
I understand.
All right, time in. Go ahead, Mr. Zavos.
The issue is whether GWP monies to the tune of $21 million can be transferred to pay for general appropriations, while the utility has to defer critically needed capital improvements, acutely needed capital improvements, because without rate increases, there is no money for them. Let me respond to a comment repeatedly made from the dais that does not contradict the truth of what I've said, but merely argues that the city needs a $21 million transfer. In doing so, I read from the last page of the grand jury that's been read before. While the grand jury understands the fiscal challenges facing cities such as Glendale, it's not permissible for the city to use Glendale Water and Power as its piggy bank to satisfy budgetary shortfalls. Rather, the city should consider alternate revenue sources and/or submit its rate structure Rather, the city should consider alternate revenue sources and/or submit its rate structure for GWP to the citizens of Glendale for their approval by a two-thirds majority vote in compliance with Proposition 218 and 26. And if the city puts it to a vote, let it do so without subterfuge, honestly informing the public as to the true implications of their vote. I have given the city clerk a hard copy of my analysis that appears online, and a copy of the 1941 resolution initiating the transfer, in hopes that the city will supply them to the outside counsel the grand jury says the city should retain. And let me just add, it is my understanding that before a grand jury report is released, it is reviewed and approved by the presiding judge and county counsel. I assume that's why there's a lapse between the March 25 report date and its release just last Monday.
Okay, John Rando, followed by Kenneth Landon.
Hello, counsel. I'm John Rando, and I'm here to talk something a little different than the latest grand jury problem we seem to be having. In Glendale, we have pedestrians versus autos versus bikes. And I'd like to know, is this still a problem that we have between pedestrians and autos? Show of hands on the council, would we all consider this a problem? I assume that you guys probably still do. And would we like a way to drastically curb these accidents of pedestrians versus autos, even bikes versus autos? Well, in Vegas, they had this problem. You know, and it was mainly on the Strip. And if you've ever been to the Strip, you must know that, you know, people begin to think that it's Disneyland, you know, they're drinking, they're gambling, there's scantily-clad women handing out things for various shows, and people forget that it's actually, that the Strip is actually a thoroughfare with moving vehicles. And they were having quite a, quite a number of pedestrian versus auto accidents. And they found a real easy way to curb this, and it's very simple, we can even do it here in Glendale. They put up a sign at each, all the four corners of the intersections that they wanted to first try this out. The sign simply said, for pedestrians, "Look left, look right, and look left again." I know this seems like a very simple, a very, very, almost throwaway idea, but it reduced the accidents in Las Vegas of pedestrians versus autos by over 60 percent. This is something that you guys should direct staff to do, find the intersections that we have the biggest problems with, and place these types of signs up there. It also had another nice effect, is it reduced accidents among automobile drivers at the same intersections. Thank you.
Kenneth Landon, followed by Richard Espirito.
Good evening, Mayor, city staff, and city council. The public expects the city, it expects its city's representatives to adhere to the state constitution, be watchful over the taxpayers' money, and be prudent in carrying out its duties and responsibilities. With respect to Measure B, Professor Zavos has clearly written several letters and made several presentations to the city council, just as he did tonight, regarding Measure B, that the current charter expressly precludes GWP revenues from going directly to the general fund to pay for general appropriations, that the electric rate increases without a two-thirds vote of the electorate, violates Section 13(c) of the state constitution, and that Measure B, the resolution itself, is totally ambiguous and misrepresents the financial impact it would have on residents if it did pass. The city representatives have acted like adversaries throughout this whole process. Example, the city clerk, he was advised to seek independent outside counsel with respect to whether to include Professor Zavos' name on the ballot, and since he was the author of the argument against Proposition B, and also by disallowing any rebuttal against the arguments for Proposition B. The city clerk, by just consulting with the city clerk, who represents the city council, is, who is, which is responsible for Measure B, precludes the public from making an objective opinion based on all the facts. Why is it that the city representatives never disclose, for example, that it was being investigated by the Los Angeles County Grand Jury, for that it was investigating whether the city is in violation of Articles 13(c) and (d) of the California Constitution, specifically Prop. 218, which is the right to vote on Taxes Act, and in Prop. 26, the supermajority vote to pass New Taxes and Fees Act? That by charging excessive rates and transferring monies from the GWP to the city's general fund without the requisite, the requisite two-thirds vote is in violation of Prop. 218 and 26. And as a result, it has less insufficient monies in the GWP reserve to pay for vital infrastructure and other GWP needs. This basically puts the utilities at risk of future water shortages and brownouts. Do you really think that you can drain GWP of, to pay for insufficient, or I mean unsustainable salaries and pensions, and then try to recapture that money by, by increasing the utility rates based on a vote by the city council without a two-thirds vote of the voters? Based on the, the grand jury interim report dated March 5, 2013, I, I realize that based on the city's arguments, that it believes that Prop. 218 and 26 does not apply, but on the same hand, the grand jury believes that the city has erroneously misinterpreted the requirements of the applicable provisions of the California Constitution, and it has made clear that the proposed special election, Measure B on April 2, 2013, by a simple majority, appears to be in conflict with Prop. 213, I mean, 218 and 26, and will not immunize the city from constitutional compliance obligations. The grand jury is concerned that the city overlooked the city charter's provisions that limit the transfer from the city, from the surplus fund account by putting total reliance on a 70-year-old charter provision that permits a transfer from operating revenues, but has no methodology for calculating rates that does not satisfy the requirements of 18 and 26. I just—
Time's up! Sit down.
Wow.
Richard Espirito—
That is really something.
Officer, would you escort him out of the— Richard Espirito. Richard Espirito. Then, Richard Espirito is followed by six speakers in a row, so I'll call those names out in order. Richard Espirito, followed by Sandy Wilson, then Mona Montgomery, then Frances Opitz, then Henry Ariano, then Sue Stewart, then Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff. I am Richard Espirito. Two weeks ago, there was a gentleman who spoke at this podium. His name was Mr. Nick Franklin. And Mrs. Spears, you were the ADA coordinator at the time I first raised the issue about the inaccessibility for people with disabilities at the Americana. That is a prevalent issue. Mr. Franklin was here talking about that. Maybe it made a little bit more sense to the members of the city council because he is confined to a wheelchair. Several years ago, Mr. Ochoa, I had done an extensive study of the city of Glendale, noncompliance with ADA. They did, an ADA, first ADA site survey was done in 1996, should have been done in 1994, and later on, in, I think it was 2005, we did a second ADA site survey. That second site survey was identical, almost identical to the first one, and there's been a number of changes here in the city, city hall, but one of the issues that has not been changed, Mr. Franklin was here two weeks ago, the men's restroom is still non-ADA accessible. He was talking about reasonable accessibility. That's true. There are areas within this city that fall under Title I, and Title II, and Title III of this city that makes it inaccessible for people with disability. Recently, I have been going in front of the Housing Authority and various other organizations here within the city of Glendale regarding the Fair Housing Act. For those of you who don't know about the Fair Housing Act, it is a mirror image of the Americans with disability. So now you have a situation where the city, especially in certain instances, especially, for example, where Mr. Franklin lives, not only you're in violation of ADA, but you're also in violation of the Fair Housing Act. So when the association completes their recent complaint with HUD, I hope you enjoy talking to the Department of Justice regarding reasonable accessibility. And, Mr. Ochoa, I wish you would still take a walk with me up Pacific Avenue someday, and remember, you do have to comply with the Americans with Disability Act, regardless of how you think. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll start with the 1 through 6 oral communication cards. Sandy Wilson, followed by Mona Montgomery, then Frances Opitz.
Good evening. This is my first time to attend your meeting. I'm Sandy Wilson, and I'm a 40-year resident in the city. What I have to say, you've heard over and over tonight, and Mr. New Jerry, and addressed the issue. Today, we were informed for the first time that the city of Los Angeles Grand Jury has issued a report that finds that the city of Glendale is not in compliance with the state constitution. The practice of raising water and electric rates, and then transferring money for the general fund purposes, does not comply with Proposition 218 and Proposition 26. And a charter amendment is not going to trump or overrule that state constitution. For the past six months, at least, the city has been under investigation by the grand jury, and yet the city manager, the city attorney, and the city council have persisted in putting a questionable measure, Measure B, on the ballot. The language and the rationale of the charter amendment must state clearly that this is a tax increase that must be approved by a two-thirds vote of the people. And I ask you tonight, by what right can you, as a city council, violate state law? Each one of you has to answer for how you act as a representative of the people of this community, and dare you violate their confidence and their trust in you as city councilman? By what right can you set up an illegal tax? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mona Montgomery, followed by Frances Opitz.
My name is Mona Montgomery. With reference to the grand jury report released last week titled Glendale Water and Power Propositions 218 and 226, the city of Glendale has been in violation of Proposition 218 for many, many years. Proposition 218 is the California constitutional amendment that prohibits money being transferred from the water fund to the general fund. This Proposition 218 was passed by California voters in 1996, and then challenged by several cities. In 2006, in 2006, 10 years later, the state Supreme Court validated Proposition 218. The city of Glendale still refused to adhere to this state constitutional amendment, despite the protests of many city activists, including Herbert Milano. In an executive summary, the grand jury addressing these issues expressed concern that the city of Glendale may be erroneously interpreting Proposition 218, and also that a proposed special election in April 2013 to clarify the city charter will not immunize the city from its constitutional compliance obligations. In later findings, the grand jury says, quote, "It is not permissible for the city to use the GWP as its piggy bank," unquote. Clearly, the raising of water rates has been declared by the grand jury to be a tax, which cannot be imposed on the residents of Glendale without a two-thirds majority vote. For all these many years, the water rate increases that have been imposed on Glendale residents were illegal because they were a tax, subject to a two-thirds vote of the people. The city violated the state constitution for 14 years. For 14 years, we have been subjected to an unconstitutional tax. Thank you.
Francis Opitz, followed by Henry Ariano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, and members of the city council. California voters passed Proposition 26 three years ago. This constitutional amendment prohibits the utility from charging rates higher than the cost of providing the service. Yet, the city council and top managers of the city have continually pushed the idea that transfers from the electrical utility that support the general fund are allowed. Any increases since the timeless law took effect are null and void. They are a tax, subject to the approval of the people. We have a democracy here. You expect us to follow the law, we expect you to follow the state constitution. You are not allowed to create a tax by increasing the electricity rates and then transfer that money for general expenses of the city, not without the consent of two-thirds of the people through a direct vote. We are a country of laws. We have a state constitution. You violate the laws to extract more taxes without voter approval.
Henry Ariano, followed by Sue Stewart.
Good evening, Mayor, and I have to excuse my, my English. The city of Glendale has its own constitution. We call it the city charter. This document, that is the supreme law of the city, cannot trump the city constitution. But in a similar way, that also means that the city's ordinances must be abide by the city charter. And if the city constitution limits the transfer of money out of the electrical utility, then no city ordinances can see, can go against the charter. The charter is clear. The charter is clear. The city cannot transfer money out of the utility surplus fund. If there is no surplus, there can't be transfer. Yet, this is exactly what you have done, year after year. The city council and the city manager and the city attorney approved the violation of the city charter. That is what we just found out from the independent report stemming out of the investigation of the Los Angeles County Civil Grand Jury. You have violated our own laws. You have created a tax, put our electrical utility in danger by postponing critical capital improvements and taking the money of the general fund. We now have confirmed it's the grand jury report. I'm also Spanish heritage, and I hope it is justice.
Sue Stewart, followed by Herbert Mulano, and that's the end of the numbered speakers.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Sue Stewart. After reading the grand jury report, it is clear to us that this city council is willing to pass ordinances that are unlawful. We are willing to ignore the constitution of the state of California. You are willing to ignore the charter of the city of Glendale. You will create a backdoor tax and tell the public that what you're doing is legal, when it's not. You will deceive and mislead the public. When found out, you try to sneak in a charter amendment to try to circumvent the laws under which we operate. It is clear now that Charter Amendment B is false and misleading. You need to tell the public that you have been imposing a tax under the pretense of a wording change. You've had a choice. You could have been truthful, but you chose not to. You could have listened to advocates, but you chose not to. You could have been doubtful, but it seems you choose the path against the taxpayer and the ratepayer. You don't deserve reelection.
You're number six and final speaker on this issue, Mr. Mulano.
Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Mulano. What we have seen in the last few minutes is democracy at work. It is the public coming before you to state a situation that they feel is unfair and uncalled for. Many individuals that come or wish to come before you are oftentimes afraid, reluctant to voice their opinion because they would be, you would be dismissive, and dismissive to an nth degree with some of the people who come to express an idea or a concept. If we come before you to applaud you and to give you a recommendation or commendation for your behavior, fine. But the real truth of democracy comes here, when you get to receive criticism for your behavior, for the ordinance, and so forth. That's the real test of a democracy. Sitting there to receive an applause does not really worth of anything. It's when you are faced with a criticism, and you take that into consideration, and you decide that you will consider those opinions and see what you can do to make it constructive. In 1978, I was working for this organization, and I remember some of the members of our staff who were about to retire very worried about the fact that they would not be able to afford their property taxes. And we, together, worked very hard to get Proposition 13 passed. Because we were afraid that government will continue to extract more and more taxes out of property owners, and there would be no relief inside. Proposition 13 was essential to millions of elderly individuals in keeping their homes. Because the reach of government oftentimes exceeds its grasp to the extent that we bear a significant burden in trying to appease you with your insignificant desire to more and more money. So you circumvented it. Cities throughout California and counties and other organizations circumvented Prop 13, and then we came around with Proposition 218. And the objective there was to say, look, don't tax us, or use excuses to tax us in another way, as property owners. But cities persisted, eventually challenged it, went to the Supreme Court ten years later, and now we have a validated Proposition 218. And yet, the city of Glendale continued to violate that law. In fact, I looked at records that showed that in the League of City meetings, year after year, the city manager and the city attorney and the staff of the city attorney actually went to those meetings where there were breakout sessions discussing the issue of how Prop 218 was a precarious situation for cities not to abide by. Those were, I read the documents, and I actually read and looked at the actual flights taken from our staff to those meetings, year after year. Well, finally, the city decided that perhaps there was a good case for you to abide by the law. Now, three years ago, we have Prop 26. And it actually means that you cannot increase the cost of electricity in order to be able to fund it and move it for other purposes other than the delivery of that electricity. And during that period of time, during all of those years, we have significant shortfalls in the infrastructure of Glendale Water and Power. Two hundred and twenty-two million for the water, over $300 million for the electric utility, we have plants that were built in 1941, we have an infrastructure in dire need of repair, and yet, that didn't matter. You moved the money over. You forgot about the infrastructure, and you forgot about the safety of all of those employees who worked at those aging plants, and what it actually means for their life and their livelihood. So here's another case. We come now before you because there is a grand jury investigation of the city's practices. The grand jury investigation is then reviewed by a judge, a judge, who finds whether this has merit. And a judge found that he had merit for this particular report to be presented. And that's what a democracy is about, that when people in power abuse their power by refusing to follow the law, that there are other means for us to hold you accountable. This whole process is about holding you accountable, to become true representatives of the people. Thank you.
Aram Asad Stepanian, followed by Sharon Wiseman. That's the final card.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aram Asad Stepanian. I haven't been here for a long time, and I was going to speak about something else, but when you banged the gavel like that, I forgot.
Did I wake you up?
Something like that. No, I just, I had been, mentioned this constitutional thing, but I was going to say something else. And I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I wanted to say that I approve of Ms. Friedman, and I think Mr. Najarian, I'm not sure, but yeah, that when you brought up the subject of Mr. Sinanian's comments over alleged emails and things, right? Because we need to know everything about a candidate, or at any time, it doesn't have to be before and after election, or, you know, related to an election. I'm sorry if Mr. Sinanian was not guilty of those emails, and if he suffers for it, his election chances, hopefully, if he's, he can come back two years if somehow what happened before what was said affects his chances for an election. Two years is not a long time for, he's a younger person. And I want to say that, the same way that I approved of Mr. Barry Allen when he brought up the subject of Mr. Draymond's alleged activity, illegal activities, I hope, I have nothing against Mr. Draymond, I hope it proves to be false, but I do approve of that, that it has to be said, then the voters can decide what, about a candidate, and that's fine. I should have been done. The other thing I want to say, well, all this talk, which I wish, from my irregular following of the council meetings, all about the utility charges and so on, and smart meters, I want to ask everyone here, those who want to be reelected, and those who have, to actually tell us at some point, if you don't know it already, Mr. Ochoa, it could be anyone, to tell us exactly, you've studied, you have all the information, study it and say, this, the smart meters are a smart idea, despite the cost, or whatever, they don't cost that much more, and just say clearly, for the benefit of the public, you, because I remember a few years ago, with Mr. Bob Yusefian, your former colleague, one time he said, Glendale tap water is drinkable, and I've been drinking Glendale tap water ever since, because I trusted him as my city council member, as a person I, I hadn't voted for him, I wasn't a citizen then, but, you know, so I would trust you, Mr. Quintero, Mr. Najarian, Ms. Friedman, Mr. Weaver, whoever, Mr. Ochoa, if you finally say clearly at some point that this smart meters is a good idea, and then you can say about this other matter that has been brought up today, that you can say clearly, okay, the transfers were not right, or they shouldn't have been done, or something, just say it clearly, and so we can, as citizens, go home and say, democracy, as Mr. Mulano says, is at work, it has worked. The city council members, maybe they were erroneous before, or something went wrong, but now they've studied it. Mr. Quintero, you are not going to be a council member, maybe you can do that next week or the week after, say, I have studied this, I got all the information, Mr. Ochoa, or whoever, and the smart meters are a good idea, or, no, we made a mistake, we'll change them, this will cost that much, and so on. And the same with the taxes. As a lifelong socialist who lived in England, I don't mind paying more taxes if it will provide proper services, so you don't have to tax me by other ways, whether it's water rates, or electrical rates, or parking fines that used to be $80, now it's $480. You don't have to sneak, not you personally, but any political body in the United States doesn't have to sneak in, just say, this is how it's going to work, and that would be very useful. Thank you.
Sharon Wiseman is the final card.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, council members and staff. First, on behalf, oh, I'm Sharon Wiseman from Far North Glendale. And first, on behalf of Crisina Valley Community Association, I want to invite everyone to our candidate forum on March 28th for city clerk candidates and Glendale Unified School District Board of Education members. It's at the La Crisina Library, 2809 Fodil Boulevard, at the corner of La Crisina Avenue, and we welcome everyone to come and hear people who are willing to run for public office in this town, whom I admire greatly. And now, speaking completely as an individual, a few remarks in the spirit of First Amendment rights, as we've had exercised tonight. First, Councilmember Weaver, the 134 cap, as I see it, wouldn't be a tunnel, it wouldn't be bored, and there would be lots of on-and-off ramps to give access to the underground portion, or the capped portion, unlike the Plan 710 tunnel, which would have no other entry or exits in the five-plus miles. And to the council members, I'm happy to see building in the downtown area with more opportunities for young people and elderly family members who may be single to find apartments near the single-family homes of their relatives. And plus, it brings jobs, and more importantly, customers for downtown businesses, and hopefully, traffic is a problem, but hopefully, people that live in these new units can walk, or ride a bicycle, or use the Beeline, and actually reduce traffic downtown. And I want to thank the council for wanting to make Glendale a better place, unlike those apparently who've been speaking here this evening, who see only the negative, and they only have complaints, and they continue to repeatedly complain about the same things without bringing any ideas on how to improve Glendale, how to improve our public funding. The taxpayers are also users of services and need public funding to help provide some of the quality of life issues that make our city so great. And I have to say, this civil grand jury issue, and I'm certainly not an attorney, but it's my understanding that grand jury rules of evidence are exceedingly loose, and it's not like a courtroom, hearsay is involved, and lots of things get said that later turn out to be completely false. And this issue reminds me of claims over the years made by Barry Allen, who is a convicted felon in Vanguardians, like his cancer cluster in Montrose, where he was going knocking on doors, frightening people, saying, have your pets had cancer, all of this. And he would talk about complaints at this board, the FBI, fair political practices, and always, you know, with the titillating, you know, skew to his reporting. And over the years, all of these complaints came to nothing. I personally think it's a way for Mr. Allen to raise funds from people who want good government and don't realize where he's coming from. And I want to urge people, perhaps, to look at the website my husband put together, BarryAllenFacts.com, which lets individuals know what kind of a person he is and what he's all about. And also, one of the other speakers mentioned pedestrian warnings, and I have to say, perhaps he hasn't noticed the stencil painting on the many intersections around town in three languages telling pedestrians to look, watch where they're going. So I think you're way ahead on that issue. And now, on another completely different topic, the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council meeting is April 1st in the Boy Scouts Building on Grand View, and everybody's welcome to come, learn what the homeowners groups are doing. And I feel compelled tonight, because Margaret Hammond isn't here, to mention, if you see bulky item around Glendale, the numbers 818-548-3916, call it in, help clean up Glendale, be part of the solution, not just naysayers and complainers. And I want to especially thank you for your time this evening, and really, your patience in the face of continued unrelenting naysaying, and thank you for serving the public of Glendale. You're not perfect, but I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weaver, then Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, I guess those people that oppose Measure B are getting scared. Now, I've sat here for a number of years, what an orchestrated performance that was out of one through six. I watched as those people came in the door, and the gadflies supporting it, the no on Measure B, walking over and helping them fill out the cards to turn in, and in addition to that, giving them a script to read, word for word. I've never seen any of them here talking about it, involve in any form at all. Now, the grand jury does not need the permission of the judge to release the report. They can release it whenever they want. Why they chose to interfere in our election process, which apparently hasn't happened in over thirty years? Why now, with this city at this time? And this draft report from the grand jury says right in their second line, the executive summary, the city could be in violation. They can't say we are, could be. By the time it gets done, who knows what it'll say? We have lectured endlessly on 218, 6, everything. And here, they put on a performance tonight for the benefit, the voting probably because they're getting scared, Measure B might pass. But, Mr. Ochoa, you take it from there.
I just, with the exception, I'll defer to council, any comments you all want to make. But with respect to Measure B, again, it is a cleanup amendment to our charter, at the end of the day. That's what it does. You heard a lot of discussion here tonight about democracy, which I think was being used interchangeably with the notion of having an opinion. Certainly, everyone has an opinion. The public comment period of the council meeting is an opportunity to express that opinion. And people are absolutely justified in feeling that their opinion is right. An opinion is a far cry from a fact. And what you heard tonight, in the succession of a number of speakers, not the least of which was Mr. Zavos, was the unabashed convincing argument that their opinion was indeed fact. was Mr. Zavos, was the unabashed convincing argument that their opinion was indeed fact. And it isn't. When you look, you heard so much misinformation tonight about what Prop 218 is and what it does, what Prop 26 is and what it does and how it's applied, that is all told in, in bits and pieces of folks' understanding of what is admittedly, in fairness, a very complex set and body of law. Yet it gets thrown out at you as though it is understood inside and out. And I can tell you that the whole discussion on Prop 218 did indeed take two, 10 years to adjudicate because it was that complex. Prop 26, much the same way. But let's be very clear. Prop 218, as it pertained to Glendale, dealt primarily with the transfer of water revenues from GWP to the city. City no longer, for the last two years, transfers such revenues. Other cities have. Other cities continue to do it because they believe that they have a case to be made under the law. And, and Glendale, being a conservative town, felt no, that we ought not do that. With respect to the electrical utilities, Prop 218 specifically exempts electric utilities. We transfer operating revenues, not, I think it's, I want to say that the percentage is 13.5, not 25%, which is allowed under the charter, 13, I think, but 13 and a half percent of operating electric revenues to the general fund, per the charter. Now, we can argue, and we have argued, Mr. Zavos, about which pocket in the, in the funds, the, the list of funds that comes from. But as you see, Mr. Zavos is not here because he knows his argument has evolved over the last period of, of months, over the last year, years really, such that the grand jury really hasn't caught up to what his argument is. I think he's actually abandoned some of that argument. With respect to Prop 26, Prop 26 is prospective. It doesn't look backwards. And so what we have done, the rate structure that is established, and it does apply to electric rates, but the rate structure that is established, that the city of Glendale, Glendale Water and Power has, is effectively grandfathered in. If we were to change that structure, not necessarily increase rates, but change that structure, that would require a two thirds vote of the people. If we do not change that structure, the law at hand seems to indicate that you would not have to do that. It still isn't within the, the purview of the city. And water rates can be increased by not a two thirds vote of the people, but a majority protest vote. Again, a great deal of misinformation thrown at you, thrown at the public really, without really any basis and understanding, let alone appreciation for governance, which again, goes back to that issue of opinion. They don't have to worry about how you do this. They just want to articulate a viewpoint. I'll, I'll end with just one comment because you heard even Mr. Zavos make this point that, and he saw it dogmatically adhered to in the recitation of the grand jury's, civil grand jury's interim report. And that is, the charter does not give the city cover for compliance or non-compliance with the constitution, state constitution. Yet in the same breath, many of the same folks are saying, you know, you need to be compliant with your charter. And therein lies the very problem that we have that is encapsulated in Measure B. Measure B is an antiquated set of language and provisions in our charter that is not consistent with generally accepted accounting principles. And all we are putting in front of the public for the public to decide, not in a special election, but in the regular election cycle, is whether or not that language should be reconciled. So we effectively aren't keeping one set of accounting records for generally accepted accounting principles for our auditors and then having to make notations so that it's consistent with an arcane charter.
Can I just briefly address some of the issues?
Sure.
Um, just, I wanted to touch on Mr. Zavos's comment that the council and staff has publicly ignored the arguments that he's made. Nothing could be further from the truth. As you know, our office put together a comprehensive memo that was distributed to the public. Our, one of my staff members presented that to the GOP Commission. I presented that to the council. Mr. Ochoa and I presented that to community groups. So contrary, we've not publicly ignored it. We disagree. We have a disagreement of opinion, but we, we have done anything but ignore his comments. Taken up a significant amount of staff time to address these issues, and we've done so thoroughly. With respect to, again, not to reiterate too much, but again, and Mr. Zavos said again, that the charter limits it to surplus monies. And the language in the, in the chart is very clear that it's based on operating revenues. With respect to the contention that the Measure B is subterfuge, Measure B specifically, the resolution putting that measure on the ballot specifically states that in event, a court were to determine that that is a substantive change that requires the two thirds vote required by Prop 26, then Measure B becomes null and void. We're aware of the concerns. We very specifically put it in there that it's not, the intent is not to make a substantive change, but only clarify the accounting source of that particular fund. A couple of comments were made this evening about why didn't the city disclose a grand jury investigation? Very simple. We are precluded by law from discussing that. We were precluded from discussing when we got the draft report. And we could only discuss it when it was released to the public, which was yesterday evening. And that's why it's been discussed here this evening. Again, to reiterate on the Prop 26 issue, because I think it's important, you know, the, the grand jury published this report and it's being taken as gospel. But the, the report itself identifies the fact that Prop 26 is not retroactive, that it doesn't apply to any transfers or any authorized transfer that's been authorized prior to Prop 26, and that it doesn't apply until an electric rate increase is proposed. Well, the city has not increased electric rates since Prop 26. So we're at a complete loss for how our current structure violates Prop 26. With, last, I just want to address the issue of, of the fact that a Superior Court judge has to approve this. Just to clarify, the judge has, does have to approve it, but the judge has no authority to limit what is in that report, right or wrong, or even if it's got libelous statements, the court, the cases say, even if the, even if the grand jury report is libelous, the court has no jurisdiction to withhold that report or redact it or amend it in any way, insofar as it's within their authority. And even then, we are, we, our position is that exceeded their authority because of the timing of the release of the report specifically to be, be an issue in the Measure B election. With that, I'll, I'll submit.
All right.
Well, what an interesting meeting we had today, I've got to say. Um, I, I saw the Marine in you come out, Mr. Quintero. I want you to know that.
Everybody gets the same amount of time, no matter who you are.
But I was actually quite worried at the beginning. I strongly believe that the grand jury, the civil grand jury report was, um, was released in order to affect our election. And I know when we make those arguments before the Attorney General or the Commission on Judicial Standards, or whoever it might be, the California Supreme Court, who would be overseeing what has happened, they would say, well, no one really talked about it. It didn't have that much effect on the community. But I am so glad Herbert, Mr. Zavos, everyone that came forward specifically referenced the civil grand jury report. And if the news press carries an article on it, it's going to be a citywide reference to an inappropriate intervention in a local election. I think the election now is tainted, folks. It's as tainted as if the city of Glendale spent money to put a big billboard throughout the town saying that you should vote a certain way on a particular measure. Um, if this isn't election tampering, folks, I don't know what is. A government entity may not take a position on a ballot measure. What we have here is a branch of the LA Courts, LA Superior Court, branch of LA County, directly intervening in our election by releasing their report as they specifically state in their documents that we're releasing this now because the residents of Glendale need to know what our interim report is. I don't know what we're going to do. This is quite a pickle. I don't know if we can seek damages for this, but it's a tampering with the rights of the Glendale citizens to make up their own mind, free of government intervention as to which way they should vote. I'm not telling you how to vote, whether I'm for it or against it. But a branch of the government should not be intervening six days before an election and have it publicized, whatever their particular slant is, on a ballot measure, heard by the citizens, broadcast on Channel 6 throughout the city on replay, and presumably going to be carried by the Glendale news press throughout the city. There couldn't be a more fouled election on Measure B. The rest of the election, I think, is fine. All the other measures were clear. The candidates are all clear. But on Measure B, there couldn't be a more fouled election and tainted and tampered measure than there is on Measure B. And I hope that our state legislature, legislators pick this up and take it to Sacramento and we get some relief in this issue because it's not fair to the city clerk. It's not fair to the voters, whichever side of the ballot measure you're on. It's not fair to the utility. Um, I just think it's a terrible situation. And this is what we owe thanks to the LA Civil Grand Jury. Who's foreman is appointed by the chief judge, who supposedly approved the report for release. So, so if someone says, oh, well, there's checks and balances, there's no checks and there's no balances. The, the residents of Glendale just got screwed on this one.
May I ask another question, Mr. City Attorney? When they finalize that grand jury report, what happens then? Does that put, are we now out of whack? Are we going to be sued? Are we going to be indicted?
The, the report only has recommendations with, with regard to what they think the city should do. We will, we are required to provide a response within 90 days. We'll do that. Our, our response gets published with the final report and, or the interim final report. I don't know what they're calling it. And then that'll pretty much be the, the, the end of that particular process.
It'd be like with Mr. Zavos. He has his opinion. We have our opinion. Thank you, Mr. Grand Jury.
I gotta say, Mr. Zavos's opinion is more thorough than the grand jury's on this particular issue.
Ms. Friedman.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I think all of the speakers left, but I wanted to thank them for coming, including those who came from other cities, like Bell and Tahunga and other places that were represented tonight. Um, it was interesting to me that they talked about democracy while ignoring that this charter, this transfer that's allowed by charter was passed by the voters, not just once, but twice. The people of Glendale actually put that into the charter and they did that through a vote of the public. That's something that they seem to be ignoring. And as was said here earlier, a grand jury report is not case law, but there is case law on this very matter. There's a recent case called the Redding case, Redding, correct, that deals exactly with this. And in fact, it deals with a city that had a charter who raised their electric, sorry, a city who had a transfer, like every utility that I know of, every public utility has a transfer. So it was a city that had a transfer and they raised their electric rates. And Redding said that that was not a prop, was it 26 or was it 218? That it was not a Prop 26 violation. So there is case law on this. And I hope that the people who came to speak will, will avail themselves of reviewing that case law because that is the law of the land at this point. And, um, it's interesting that the grand jury didn't review that case at all. And that is the only, the most relevant case in regards to our transfer. So I would remind, remind the people of Glendale that there is case law on this, real case law, and that it affirmed not only our transfer, but even raising electric rates when you have a transfer. Um, and something that's, you know, interesting to me, and Mr. Zavos talked again about this, you know, his main thing at this point is not Prop 218 or Prop 26. It's about the surplus fund. We have to transfer from a surplus fund. And I've been asking this at every single forum, and he hasn't, and he's been at many of those forums, and he hasn't addressed it. And I'm very curious as to his response and anybody else's. But how does a utility run, how does this utility run a surplus? How does any utility run a surplus? Remember, it's not a reserve. They had a reserve fund. They had a depreciation fund, and then they had a surplus fund. How do you run a surplus, Mr. Zern? You run a surplus by charging more for rates than you're using in your utility. That's the only way you can run a surplus. You're making a profit. They set up a surplus fund in order to run a profit to make this transfer. And it's very clear in the charter language that you must transfer. It says shall transfer 25% of operating revenue. It doesn't say of surplus revenue. It says of operating revenue. And then it sets up a mechanism to put your surplus, your excess revenue that you've taken from the ratepayers into that surplus fund to pay for that 25% transfer. It's so obvious to me. There's no other way that a utility can run a surplus. A surplus means you're charging more for your rates than you need to run your utility. So we could certainly do that. We could budget for more than we need, and we could put it into a surplus fund and transfer it over. But it seems to me that that's not very transparent. And that's what Measure B is trying to deal with. Now I'm going to switch completely to something else, and that's Mr. Hooker's question about why the ballots aren't transferred, aren't translated, not transferred, aren't translated into Spanish and other languages. And I've had the same question many times. And I want the public to know that the city council didn't vote on this. This was not a council decision. In fact, as a candidate, I thought, when we went in and I was going to check boxes for translation, I was told, oh, no, those are, those are all going to be translated into the, you know, usual languages that the ballots are translated into. So I would, um, this is really under the purview of the city clerk. So I would ask him to, to make that response to the public.
Um, thank you. I actually wanted to answer, Mr. Hooker. The ballot was translated into three languages. It was translated into Armenian, Spanish, and Korean. The voters who require those needs, per the Los Angeles County Registrar's identified records, received those sample ballots directly. And we have surplus ballots of those languages available for anyone who wants them on request. Um, the reason the ballot was translated to English, Armenian is because of the statistics that were available to us. That showed us that is the second most frequently spoken language in the city. And that became our default ballot. This is a model that is in compliance with the Department of Justice with the Federal Voting Rights Act. And it is a model that is used in a number of cities, including Pasadena, including Monrovia, who do the same exact thing by having a bilingual ballot. So there were three ballot versions. There's an English, Armenian version, an English, Spanish version, and an English, Korean version. And those were sent to individuals who require those.
So which, which is the one that's generally sent out?
English, Armenian, if, unless you're specified as English, Spanish, or English, Korean.
Is when they last put it in?
Didn't you do, uh, didn't you do it in three languages in the?
We've done it in four languages before. But here's one of the issues with that. Given the number of measures, given the number of candidates, the ballot would tend to be over 79 pages long if we included everything in one language. This was in the last election, where we had only six candidates for council. There was only one measure on the ballot. I believe it was close to 60 pages for the ballot. And once you get into the area of more pages, then it costs more to publish. It costs more to ship out. And that is one of the issues that we had. In addition to that, there were a number of people that offered us feedback, saying that the four languages in one ballot caused great deal of confusion, including on the ballot card. And we did mention this in the November, I believe, 19th call for elections report in terms of the fiscal impact and how we were looking to save money. Um, it is something that we can continue to explore to see how others, we, we actually consulted with our consultant, Martin and Chapman, sought ways of how other cities have structured their ballot, what was in compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act, and what other cities had been asked to do by the Department of Justice. And that is a method that we followed.
So if you want, what'd you say if you, to get an English, Spanish ballot, what had to happen?
If someone, if someone has a need for English, Spanish, that is the language they receive it in.
Yeah. In other words, if, if they previously voted with an English, Spanish ballot, or submitted a Spanish ballot, then that ballot was sent to them by, directly by the LA County Registrar.
They didn't have to call in and say, I want?
Right. And then in addition, if they, somebody wants a Spanish or Korean ballot, then they can also call in and say, I want one of those two ballots.
So they'd have to take?
All right. Well, let me tell you, for the record, I disagree. I think either you send it out in the four major languages, or you don't send it out at all. So that's how I feel about it. I'm not comfortable that it just goes out in one foreign language and not the other two large communities here in the city of.
Well, it, it has gone out, though. It has gone out. Those people received it. But the question was how to simplify it so those individuals who are receiving it are able to understand it. So there's three bilingual ballots. There could be four. There could be an English only. There could be an English, Armenian. There could be an English, Spanish. There could be an English, Korean. But that would again, raise the costs of printing those and then running them and mailing to those individuals. That is something to be considered. But, you know.
I think it needs to be considered because, I mean, when someone gets, I have a Latina woman that received a ballot, English, Armenian. There was nothing, there was no Spanish in it, strictly two languages, which, I mean, quite frankly, you know, English is a dominant language in this country. So I'm, I'm all for using English as a common denominator, but it's not appropriate, I think, to mail in two and ignore two others.
That's the way I feel, too.
Anyone else?
Okay, I want to go down the line on some of the comments tonight. Candidate Mike Mohill talked about downzoned family neighborhoods and seemed to feel that we didn't downzone these multifamily neighborhoods. In fact, we did. That is a, that is a fact, that multifamily neighborhoods all over the city of Glendale were downzoned a few years ago. And we chose to do the, uh, were downzoned a few years ago, and we chose to do the increased housing and multifamily, chose to do it in the downtown area. Then the forty-four units of veterans housing, which I totally support, are on Salem, right near the bus lines, can't think of a better place. Those units also include supportive services, so veterans in need of more than just housing, but in need of supportive services, whether they're disabled or have other issues, there's going to be an organization on site to do that. Mr. Zavos said that, and you mentioned it, Mr. Garcia, that he was ignored, and, oh my God, I mean, the staff has spent countless hours answering his questions and literally writing briefs, et cetera, et cetera. So the idea that he was ignored, I can't think anything that's further from the truth. Then, many of the speakers kept talking about the state constitution being at issue. I'm not sure that the state constitution is at issue.
Well, Prop 26 and Prop 218 are constitutional provisions. But again, we believe we're in compliance.
Right. Then Mr. Milano talked about democracy being at work, and I think it was politics at work. He is a candidate, and he organized his speakers very well, and I was very happy that it wasn't the normal three or four that are here at the podium every meeting. I'm glad that there were people out in the community that came to speak. But he also said that we were dismissive of people that come to speak, and that's just not true. None of us on this dais have been dismissive of people that are here at the dais. We let them speak, those same three or four who don't want to stay on the timelines, or want to get off of the agenda items, and we have to bring them back into line, but it's just that throughout the year, this particular council candidate, I think, has had a very difficult time facing criticism. He's the one that can't take the criticism, not the people on the dais. I think we're pretty well used to it. And then finally, Mr. Stefani, and I'm very happy to see you again, it's been quite a while. My feeling on smart meters is that it is a very good idea, and it's not just some isolated device that's going into people's homes, apartments, and condominiums. In fact, it's part of an entire smart grid that this nation and other nations across the world are heading in that direction. The digital age has come to electricity monitoring, and power, and transfers, and everything else. So this is a very, very positive effect for the residents of Glendale. There are some people that are scared to death about it. I like to use the example of my mom, back when TV first started, I grew up in Tampa, Florida, and it required putting an antenna on the top of your house. Well, that region of the country between Tampa and Daytona Beach, including the Orlando area, that is the lightning capital of the world. There is more lightning there than anywhere else. And my mom insisted, we're not getting a TV because it's going to draw lightning, right? As you know, lightning, anyway, but of course, being the only child, she eventually had to give in and bought the television. So, look, any technology scares people, but there's absolutely nothing, and that tape that was run by that lady notwithstanding, there's absolutely no scientific evidence that smart meters are affecting anyone. And in fact, I believe it's less sort of pulsing than what is a device that does more? Is it a computer, or a phone? An internet modem, right. Probably a wireless modem may draw more, more juice into people's psyche. So I personally just don't think there's any health issues associated with it, but there's certainly psychological issues, and we've had numerous people that have come to this podium, and in fact, have, you know, I think, been suffering, because psychologically, there was a woman from Burbank with some heart-wrenching stories. Burbank, I guess, has started to implement their smart meter programs. Southern Cal Edison, was it four point six million, I believe? Yeah, they, close to five million. Southern Cal Edison, the big electrical provider in the city, has installed close to five million. So I think it's going to help us to better utilize electrical usage, including the individual that can absolutely monitor how much usage is taking place in his house when you turn on a washing machine or refrigerator starts up. So I think it's a great device. It's been expensive, we got a federal grant, but I'm happy we did it.
Mr. Mayor.
Weaver.
Smart meters, it hasn't affected me yet, at least I don't think it has, but some others would say it has affected me. One last comment, Mr. Zavos. When the news press had the gall to endorse Measure B, Mr. Zavos wrote a very unflattering letter to Dan Evans, saying that he didn't know what he was doing because he didn't agree with Mr. Zavos. I was a, I move we adjourn.
Right, there's a second.
Is there a second?
We are adjourned.